Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk-Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Municipal Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the December 7th Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please take your, remember to take your microphones off mute and rise to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Protocols for Public Participations and Guidelines for Remote Learning. Because we are remote, we can't take live testimony. So if anyone wants to send any public comments, please send them in the following way. You may send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we receive tonight, our goal is to always read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy and bony, we would just not read public comments into testimony. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. Up until just recently, that had never happened, and it has only happened once to date. I'd just like to be sure to address it upfront in case we find ourselves in that position. In addition, we've received many, a lot of feedback from many of you, and as such, we have added a public comments to the beginning of the menu of the agenda, so that any comments, public comments that come in prior to our meeting, we can be sure to read. So you've spoken, we've heard, and I also wanted to provide a little bit more information as to the one time that we were unable to read the public comments. At that time, late into the evening, it appeared we had almost 30. I did some quick math in my head, and looking at two to four minutes, it probably would have put us so close to midnight if we read through those. It's not that your input is not valuable. It's not that at all. We've read carefully your feedback, and I just want you to know that your voice has been heard. Thank you. So Shannon, I'm going to turn it over to you for the public participation. I know there's a few items that are in our mailbox already to be able to read into the record.
That's right. Thank you, Cinda. We do have emails from four constituents. I will start with Patrick McLaughlin, 2 Cranston Circle. Hello, as a parent of two Merrimack School District students, one attending MHS and one attending MMS, I believe that while switching to fully remote learning environment through January 18th, the district missed an opportunity to improve the level of education being delivered to the town's school children. Under the hybrid plan implemented since the beginning of the school year, MMS and MHS students have had significantly less direct instruction time than they receive in normal, in normal in-person, five-day-per-week setup. MMS students take only two of four core classes, math, science, language arts, social studies per quarter. In the hybrid model, those classes receive direct instruction two days per week. Missing two days per week rather than five, and meeting for only half the school year rather than the full school year leaves these students significantly shortchanged in the amount of instruction they receive in each subject over the course of the full school year. MHS student schedules are structured differently, but the net result is very similar. They also receive less than half the instruction time they would receive in an in-person, five-day-per-week setting. The switch to fully remote learning provided an opportunity to begin to make up for the shortfall in direct instruction time. In a fully remote environment, each student could be receiving four days' worth of instruction by attending class online Monday through Thursday. A virtual teaching slash learning environment does not require that attendance be reduced by 50% as a hybrid model does for purposes of distancing and capacity control. As a parent, I was optimistically looking forward to my children having the opportunity to quote "catch up" end quote on learning that has been missed in this point in the school year. For the period of December 2nd through January 18th, I believe that MMS and MHS students would have the opportunity to learn at something close to the normal pace than they, that they had prior to the 2019-2020 school year. Unfortunately, that won't be the case. Based on what I can tell, MHS students will not receive any more instruction in the fully remote model than they have in the hybrid model. I applaud Principal Carver's plan for the amount of instruction time that will be provided to MMS students in the core classes they are taking. Still, MMS students will remain without instruction in the other two core classes for the duration of the second quarter. MSD teachers will have a much better estimate than I have on the following, but based on what I observe and understand, students in our district will receive far less than 50% of the amount of direct instruction this school year than they would have in a typical school year. It is logical to conclude that they will learn less than 50% of the material that they would in a typical school year. We are well aware that every single person involved in the process continues to face challenges unlike we have faced before. In the midst of these, of these challenges, it is apparent that the 2020-21, 2021 school year will not in fact provide a full year's worth of education to MSD students. And it looks to me like the district, on the whole, has passed up the opportunity to make up for some of that shortfall while the students are in the fully remote model. In addition to expressing my disappointment about this missed opportunity, I have questions for the board. What is your plan to provide students in the Merrimack School District with the opportunity to maximize their learning potential in the 2020-2021 school year? Is it your belief the amount of learning achieved in the 2020-2021 school year would approximate to the extent possible the amount achieved in a typical academic year? And if the amount of learning achieved this year falls below that of a typical year, do you plan to have a plan that will provide MSD students a path to make up for the shortfall? Thank you for your consideration, Patrick McLaughlin. The next email is from John Calabro, 16 Hutchinson Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Thus, we're taking your testimony, so thank you for that. I have been asking about school gym availability for MIA sports with good information received but no answer. MIA quote "winter sports" end quote are basketball and wrestling. Both would have started in November but have been delayed due to gyms not being available. I ask that the school board consider MIA sports. Thanks, John Calabro, MIA President. Next is from Tina Mendel. Good evening, my name is Tina Mendel, and I live at 4 Tanglewood Way here in Merrimack. We have a middle school aged child. I'm writing in this evening to voice my concern on the live instruction time that our children receive. As of right now, only two days live instruction is happening, and we are fully remote. Since the kids are remote, why are they not receiving more live instruction time? I see other towns are able to make live instruction four days a week happen, so why are we not able to? For the parents that work outside the home, it makes it very difficult on independent days to keep the kids on task while not being there in person. Please consider more days for live instruction. These kids need it and deserve it. Tina Mendel. The next one is Angelique Almedeo, I hope I got your name right, from Eight Owls Court. Hello, I am writing for this public comments at tonight's meeting. My son at Reed's Ferry has been full remote this whole year. He has one live special per week, and it is about 15 to 20 minutes. While meanwhile, the hybrid students have had two live specials per week for 45 minutes each. This has been inequitable for four months now. A friend at MES has a child who has been full remote also, and has told me that her child has had two live meetings per week on both his live days, so it is inconsistent across the district. I'm a remote teacher in another district, and my students have a live 45-minute special five days a week, even one on the flex day. I was told that the reason my child is not receiving at least two specials for the regular length of time is due to scheduling. However, I feel this is an unacceptable answer, as other districts and even other schools within the district are making it work so that full remote students get the special time that they deserve. Please find a way to adjust the schedule to allow my child to receive more than one 15-minute live special per week he deserves, and to make it more equitable to the students who have chosen the hybrid option. And one more, I think we will be caught up, is Greg Hooven, 5 Crestview Circle. Dear Merrimack School Board, in reviewing the agenda for tonight's meeting, I along with many in the community would appreciate it if you could take a few minutes to explain the rationale behind going fully remote and still keeping students in a hybrid model when it comes to instructor-led education. I realize that some schools and classes are doing a couple small group sessions on off days, in parentheses, my daughter's class at J-Muse, for instance, in parentheses, but my son's classes at MMS remain completely hybrid. Two days instructor-led, two days self-learning, and a month flex day. With the conversation of all students to full, I'm sorry, with the conversion of all students to full-time remote for the next several weeks, there should be no, no longer, there should no longer be staff shortage concerns, as teachers would be able to double up class sizes if needed to provide all students with a minimum of four, preferably five, days of teacher-led instruction. In addition to that question, please provide some details on what is currently being done now to start prepping the school and staff for the return to in-school, in parentheses, hybrid or full in-person after the Martin Luther King holiday in January. It seems to me that you were to take some of the classes and combine them as they are virtual for the next few weeks. You could free up some teachers to allow a subset to start prepping for that now. Likewise, with some of the funds that I presume will be saved over the next several weeks via bus fuel, some administrative staff, et cetera, you could repurpose those funds to not only hire some more teachers for the spring season, but also update some of the technology in the classrooms to allow teachers to present to both in-person and remote students. That would eliminate the need to run duplicate class days for different cohorts, and again, provide all students with a minimum of four days of teacher-led instruction. Lastly, and this is a side request that came up during our parent-teacher conference for my daughter at J-Muse, apparently there is a new grading system that has been implemented at J-Muse, narrative with different letters is the way it was explained. Please put together some guidance for the parents on how this new grading system will affect class placement when the kids move over to the middle school. I asked if this of my daughter's teacher, and either she was simply unaware or it has not been communicated, but that is something that should be addressed ASAP. Please let me know if you have any questions or if you need any additional information. Thank you, Greg Hooven. And I think we are up to date, and that one came in at 7:06, so I think we're in good shape. So with that, I think that's all we have for public participation. Chair, while you may.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on the agenda is request to readdress the wrestling season. This has come forward from a parent, and it's Tammy Dour. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you. She requested to be on our agenda for this evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Tammy Dour. I have a wrestler in the high school program, and I am the president of the Wrestling Boosters. I want to thank you all for affording me the time to speak to all of you this evening. Unfortunately, we didn't have the chance to address you at the last board meeting, but we felt that it was important to speak about the wrestling program, just because we don't feel that a lot of people understand, understand the sport. So a couple of the things that I just want to touch on is just, I want to note that right now we are in a complete remote learning status, so there is no concern and very low risk of bringing COVID into the classrooms or the schools and exposing any of the teachers or the student body. Some things about the sport of wrestling that you guys might not know. We, as a program, last year, we bought a brand-new mat. So the mats that we use to wrestle on are completely brand-new, and we sanitize them every time we use them, before and after. We sanitize all the gear, and I don't know if you're aware, but there is not another sport that has to deal with infectious diseases like the sport of wrestling. Our athletes are, they have to practice healthy hygiene. And what that means is that they are accustomed to taking showers immediately after practices or dual meets or tournaments, and if they can't shower, they wipe down. And it's not just a matter of taking a towel and wiping down. We actually have special defense wipes that we purchase that fight back against skin infections, because they are so common in this sport. So that's just something that our wrestlers are used to doing, so having to deal with COVID is nothing new. Our kids are used to practicing healthy hygiene. The other thing is that, I don't know if it's something that other sports practice, but with our sport, way before COVID, if they're sick, they do not come to practice. Because the way wrestling is, if you're, if you've got a cough or you're sick, we say stay away, because it will just demolish a team. So with COVID, it's, it's nothing new. You just, you don't come to practice, you don't wrestle if you're sick. I believe Cinda distributed some protocols to you all this weekend. I was able to speak with quite a few of the other high schools. The coaches were generous enough to share their safety protocols that they've put into place for the schools that are going forward with the season. We are planning on using those same protocols. They're a little bit different depending because we have different sizes of teams, but some of the other protocols that we're planning to use, more frequent mat sanitation. So typically, for a, for a dual meet, our kids would wrestle on one mat. What we're proposing now is that we would have two mats set up in the gym, and they would wrestle on one mat, and then the next duel that would come up, or the next match that would come up, they would shift over to the next mat, and that initial mat would be cleaned, and they would just take place, and they would trade off on the mats. So each set of wrestlers would be wrestling on a clean mat. Okay? So the mats would always be sanitized. Let's see. The other thing is, the Booster Club has offered to purchase defense wipes for each of the wrestlers to carry in their travel bags, so that there would be absolutely no reason, no excuse, they could always have something to wipe down after they've wrestled. Let's see. For practices, we would have segregated practices, we'd alternate conditioning and mat times, we'd social distance, wear masks when not wrestling, and the coaches would always be wearing the masks. We'd screen the wrestlers, give them questionnaires before stepping onto the mats, coming to practices. We'd record temperatures of the coaches and participants. Trying to think if I've forgotten anything. Some of the other schools that the NHI, AA have approved, that they've approved wrestling to go forward, we've got Hollis, Brookline, we've got South Keegan, Pelham, Timberlane, Concord, Boe, Salem, Alvern, Wyndham, Exeter, all of these schools have decided to go forward with wrestling this season. One of our seniors drew up a petition. We were able to get 505 signatures. 153 of those came from Merrimack alone, and over 300 came from New Hampshire. So the other thing that I want to note is that throughout this pandemic, our little town of Merrimack hasn't seen any of it, but there has been a lot of wrestling going on, a lot of wrestling, where there have been large, enormous gatherings, thousands of kids, coaches, parents. They've practiced, they've worn masks. There have been absolutely no outbreaks, and you can believe you me that with the way that this sport is, if there had been any outbreaks, everybody would have known because of the amount of people that have been gathered. And it just, it doesn't happen. And I don't know if it's because of the way these kids practice hygiene, but there have been no COVID outbreaks at any of these, and I can give you examples of different tournaments that have taken place, and you can look online, but no outbreaks. Let's see. Also, there have been clubs in the area, they've been practicing since the beginning of COVID. I have one more thing, but I just wanted to mention that the last meeting that we weren't able to be a part of, one of the board members made a note to everybody when they decided to go forward with all of the other winter sports, and it really struck with us because we just didn't understand why it applied to everybody but wrestling. And that was that it should be up to the parents and families to assess the risk of what their child participates in. So we just hope that, you know, as logic, it should be applied to wrestling as well as all the other sports. We have a video for you all to watch, and I just want to thank you all for your time.
My name is Colin Jones, and I'm a senior. Wrestling season means so much to me. As soon as I found out it was canceled, I made a petition. We have 513 signatures, 300 from New Hampshire, 155 from Merrimack. I love this sport, and I really hope you guys reconsider.
Hi, I'm Emily. I'm a freshman, and I really want a wrestling season this year because it is a great sport, and it helps you grow a lot physically and mentally. And I just love the competitiveness of the sport, and I look forward to meeting new people every year that are joining, or I'm just meeting for the first time, so I think that we should have a season this year.
I think we need this wrestling season not only to be able to work out and bond as a team, and get to know the coaches and everyone that gets to put in work for the team, but also be able to adjust and get ready and be a part of the high school team, since it's a different atmosphere than the middle.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Vittal. I'm a senior this year, and when I found out that we were not going to have a season, I was so, so bummed, especially because I can confidently tell you guys that me and other people on this team have made our best memories in high school from wrestling, whether it was off or on that mat. So please, I beg you guys to reconsider this and let us have a season.
Wrestling really helps me stay in good shape. It's really, it's a lot of fun. You know, I've made a lot of friends through wrestling. It's been a really good experience for me.
I want there to be a wrestling season this year, because I had a really good season last year. It's a lot of fun, and it keeps me in shape, and you get to see a lot of friends that I don't normally get to see outside wrestling.
Wrestling is important to me, as being involved in this sport makes me feel a part of the school community. It allows me to socialize in a positive way with other students who have an interest in my favorite sport.
Hi, my name is Hanson Dour, and I believe Merrimack should be able to have a wrestling season this year, because it brings together a whole community in person. My family has sacrificed so much for me in order to help me improve. And as for the team, my senior friends especially deserve a season to help them feel accomplished and feel like their senior year is complete. Wrestling brings together a whole community on its own, and that is why Merrimack needs wrestling this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, are you, are you finished with your presentation?
I am.
Are you open to some questions?
I am.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Shannon?
Thank you, and thank you for sending that information along. I noticed that in, one of your team examples mentioned daily COVID testing. Are they actually doing like clinical laboratory testing, you're saying, or are they just doing the temperature checks?
I believe they are planning on doing COVID testing.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that, that one, I don't think.
But these were, these are also proposals. So that the, these are proposals that they, that they sent in. Not necessarily all of them are going to take place, but these are all things that they are willing to do.
Gotcha. And so if you're saying that the students would be doing those testing, there would not be the school being responsible for it?
No, no.
Okay. Because I'm not sure logistically how we would accomplish.
Yeah.
So thank you. We'd probably have to do it for every athlete at that point, for the same reasons. Logistically, I don't think we could. And I do appreciate all of the steps that you discussed, you would go through for, you know, sanitizing, the fact that you acknowledge that there's definitely things like skin disease in your sport, and the steps that you take pre-COVID, outside of the COVID protocols, to do so. And I think when we were presented, I still understand, and by the way, I come from a big wrestling area, I'm from upstate New York, and kids in my school, I had state champions in my school, they were pre-Olympic, you know, Jeff Gretler, if you've heard of that wrestler, he came out of the area where I grew up, not far from where we grew up, so, big wrestling area. But I think when it comes, when it comes down to it, what we're hearing is proximity. So, you know, proximity of students, you know, we don't have control, and I think the one thing that came up a lot was we don't have control of how other students are managing coming into our environment, and we're putting them in very close proximity for, for a period of time, closer to six feet, like six inches, you know?
So the interesting thing is that with each of our, like, matches, each wrestler is going to come into contact with one other person. That's all. Just one other person. They are also going to be checked, you know, temperature checked, they're going to be screened. And a wrestling match lasts at most six minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying some of that. It's been a long time since I've been in high school, if you hadn't guessed. So I haven't been to a match in a long time. So those are my questions. So thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions from the board? Jenna? You're on mute, Jenna.
I'm sorry, I'm the worst at Zoom. So thank you for coming. I appreciate you coming and taking the time out, and I'll say to you what I've already said to you and to others who have contacted me is, you know, I didn't really know much about wrestling. So when a presentation is made to me by, you know, and it said, like, I don't know a way to make it safe, my mind goes to what I know of wrestling, right? And I say, oh, right, yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. So it helps that you come back and you explain to us how it can be done safely, and I have learned a lot in the last, however long it's been. I've done some research, and I've talked to people myself, and, and I have learned that other schools are finding ways to do it safely, and other clubs are finding ways to do it safely, and learning about what a dual meet is, and how you only wrestle one person, and it, and then that's it, and then masks on, back apart. And so I learned a lot, and I think, and I, and I am inclined, you know, honestly, to say, you know, for students, it is, and parents, you know, if you want to assume the risk, that's great. I think our only concern as a board is how to mitigate those risks coming into the building, but it sounds like, you know, you guys have taken a lot of precautions in how you're going to deal with it, and, you know, if we were to say, yeah, we, we want to move forward, we're placing a lot of trust on wrestlers and their families to say, please. You know, if we were to say, yeah, we, we wanna move forward, we're placing a lot of trust on wrestlers and their families to say, please. If you're sick, if coming to contact, we're trusting you to, if we were to vote that way, to do the right thing because. Um. Because our community depends on it and I, what I can say with certainty is that. Parents in this community want their kids in school. They don't want to be remote. Um, and so. We um, would need to take that super seriously because we don't want to do anything that's gonna cause us to be remote longer than we need to be. So um, I appreciate you coming in and, and everything you've done previous to coming to educate me on. What's being done and what can be done.
And can I say something?
Of course.
I don't know if um. I think I wanna say that there was in a couple of the protocols, there was mention of contracts. Where the parents and students had to sign contracts, um, you know, stating that. They had not, you know, left New England or whatever the, the um, travel guidelines were. They had not been exposed. They do not have a fever, you know. Because of the safety. And I, I know that the parents and students would sign contracts in that case. And I know that, I think I wanna say that there were a couple of schools that said that if they were caught outside of that, that obviously they would be kicked off the team. Cause it is a serious, it is serious.
It is, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Lori?
So I, I wanna say, um. You know, having the students do the presentation like COVID nineteen has taken a lot from people, but it's also. Having students be leaders and take a leadership role, I think it's really impressive in that they came forward to. Uh, advocate for their sport. I think that was um, you know, a, a good thing and um. You know, when uh, the athletic director made his presentation at the time. Time, uh, you know, there were not very, there, there were not the number of schools that you listed. We. I reached out, I, I did the research, who's doing wrestling this year? And um, there wasn't teams doing wrestling this year. So uh, even though um. My dad was on the school board, he was instrumental in starting the wrestling program. My brother was the first state champ wrestler. I, I understand wrestling and I support wrestling. I didn't think there was gonna be wrestling in the state of New Hampshire because most schools were. Approving a lot of sports and not approving wrestling. So um, I'm interested to hear how the rest of the board feels about this.
Andy?
For, so for me, I sort of equate this back to the presentation we have for parents about football in the fall. Where they stressed all the things that the Booster Club was gonna do, um, how all the students were. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate all that presentation. So for me. The real question boils down to. What the athletic director believes based on what he's heard, what he's seen. Because at the end of the day, we can decide, but it's really up to our administration and our athletic department to be able to manage this moving forward. So I'm really. Curious as to the thoughts, not only of the board, but also of the athletic department in terms of what they've heard. And do they think they can accommodate some of the things that the, the Booster Club is proposing that they do um, to be able to manage this as best possible. So that's sort of. Where my head's at right now is sort of see what the reaction is that way.
So I, I can tell you that, you know, first and foremost, my, my position hasn't changed. I, I, I still am not going to recommend that we wrestle, at least not competitively. Um, so that part of it hasn't changed. Since day one, I've had protocols written. Cause ultimately, you know, the board will make the decision and it's my task to make sure it's as safe as it can be. And so the protocols have already been written and so we're ready to move forward if we have to. Um, but I, I, I still don't believe it's the right choice.
Yeah, Andy, sorry, I was, I couldn't get.
Waving, I don't know. So, so, so Mike, just to, to follow up on that. So do you share different concerns than what the, what Tammy has presented to us? I mean, it's. It sounds like the parents and the students and everybody are pretty much aligned that they're comfortable with the risk and, and can support manage. Is there an exposure or a risk or concern that you have? Cause I mean, I, I'd like us to be as honest and transparent as we can as we're gonna make a decision here.
No, I mean, the, the concerns are out there and, and I think everybody shares them, including the parents and the families and the kids and everybody is concerned. About possible transmission of COVID nineteen, but in, in my viewpoint, it's really not a lot different than the football situation, which. I, I didn't think was a good idea and we, we, we got through it and I think with some luck, um, with some sound protocols, but with some luck. Um, did, so that, does that, that mean that we couldn't get through this too? Sure. I mean, you, you can roll the dice and take a chance and, and see where it goes. Um, the nature of this sport is just a little bit different in, in the close proximity they're gonna have with one another and. Tammy is correct, you're talking about one wrestler from our team with one wrestler from another team. But if there's transmission, there's going to be transmission throughout the team. Even if we're wrestling in small cohorts and practices, it's going to spread. So that, that is a distinct possibility. The other piece of this is. When we made our presentation initially, we were not in a remote learning model. We are now. And part of the reason why it doesn't change my opinion is what happens after Martin Luther King Day? When we still have half the wrestling season to go. And we're back in school. So unfortunately, my concerns haven't changed. And yes, Tammy is correct, there's a number of schools that have decided to wrestle. There are two schools along with us that have decided not to. Bedford is not wrestling, Pinkerton is not wrestling. And there are others that are still pending decisions. All the Seacoast schools with the exception of Exeter. Have not made decisions yet. The Manchester schools have not made decisions yet. So there's a lot of still pending decisions out there. Not that that really matters. We're really focused on what happens in our community. So, uh, again, protocols are written. We'll do whatever the board wishes. We're prepared for whatever the board wishes. I just, right now, still can't support it.
Any other comments from the board? So for me, you know, I don't like being in the business of telling parents what to do. You know, and controlling, you know, to a certain point of, you know, what choices they can make for their families. However. I do wanna maintain safety for the rest of our population and our student body and that's where the real challenge is for me is. Um, maintaining that, that safety once we go back to school full-time. So I guess the question is, you know. Mr. Susie, if you could walk through some of those protocols that you think would make it the safest, you know, would they include something that it sounds like? The wrestling families are willing to do, which would be to take COVID tests prior to matches. Um, I think that's what I heard from, um, from Mrs. Dwar. Um, so I wondered if you could just walk through what you think that those best protocols would be. If we, if we did decide to move forward.
So best protocol would be COVID tests, but I don't see how you can make that happen. I don't see how you can ha- make that happen within our own team. And then if we are requiring it from our opponents, then we're gonna have nobody to wrestle. So, so that would be the safest way to do it. It'd be the safest way to conduct any sport that we have this winter. Um, it, it would be to require COVID tests across the board, but um, that's just not manageable and we can't do that from a school standpoint. So now you're asking families to go out pretty much every other day and get a COVID test and. Uh, I don't know if that's reasonable. Outside of that, you know, many of the same protocols that were listed in the reports that. You know, Tammy gave you about, you know, Hollis Brookline's protocols and Concord's protocols and Salem's, we've already written all of those. We already have those in place. The two mat system, we already have that written. It's already in place. So there are things that we can do to make it safer. But for me, it doesn't mitigate enough of the risk.
When does the season end? Exactly.
So the season, I can't give you an ex- well, I can give you an exact date. I think it is the second week in February is the end of the regular. Their season and then there is a dual meet tournament for the state tournament. So that'll go on for another couple of weeks, depending on how you do.
And it sounds like these, these kids are doing wrestling anyways. So they're doing it through their clubs, they're doing it. Without our proto- I mean, without our control of protocols with protocols from. Clubs or other places where they're doing their wrestling matches right now, correct?
I'm sure some of them are, yes.
Okay. Uh, Jenna?
Oh, okay. Um, so, uh. I didn't realize it ended quite that early. I thought it went a little bit more into March. Um, I'm really inclined to. Find a way to allow this to move forward. Um, I, I don't know how amenable that um, wrestling families would be. To, you mean, you mentioned a contract. What about a, what about a compromise? What about a, okay, you can wrestle, but we're, I mean, if the choice is between no, we don't think it's safe and, and. You know, so we're gonna say no. Would a compromise be, okay, yes, you can wrestle, but you'd have to agree to stay remote until wrestling season was over? I personally don't like the idea of making people's educational choices for them. However. Had I been given that decision as a parent, I would have sat my kid down and said, here's the choice and. I know what he would have chosen, right? So I would have been thankful to have the choice. As opposed to it just being presented as a, sorry, this isn't an option. Again, I'm not, I don't. I, I'm not, if parents are willing to take the risk, then I don't wanna, then I don't have a problem with that. What the only concern is, and I think that the board has. And uh, is definitely just making sure that whatever does happen doesn't spread into our school community. Um, so I, I feel like there's a middle ground we could explore if we, if we chose to, um, that would allow them to wrestle. Because I think it's important, you know, and that's just my thought.
Do I have a motion from anyone? Lori?
I was just gonna say, um, I know, I know Mike probably has already thought of this, but. Um, in some school districts that are allowing wrestling, the parents are signing a liability contract. They're taking the responsibility and liability for their child. Um, I just wanted to.
I said a question for Mike, Lori. You cut out at the end.
Sorry, no, I just said I'm sure he's thought of that. I, I'm, I'm sure. I just wanted to point it out. It would be, you know, I would think that would be an expectation to have that. You know, Jenna talked about a contract, but that would also be part of it. That's what I, you know, uh, when Jenna was talking about a contract, that's what I was thinking. I don't know.
Andy?
So I'm not making a motion, just to make sure you're clear about that. Um, so my thought is. So we heard a lot of discussion about the different sports and the pre- and the precautions that are gonna be made for basketball and hockey and things like that. Um, and we, we sort of rolled with the risk as a board by allowing those. We heard what the Booster Club's gonna do to. To alleviate and mitigate the risk as much as possible and um, and things like that and I'm going. Even though inherently there's higher risk with wrestling than others, if you mitigate the risk as much as you can, you're being as pragmatic as possible. To this, so I'm inclined, uh, based on the will of the board, if there's any sort of a. Liability or statement for parents to sign, I'm sort of inclined to roll it in with the others to let it happen, given the Booster Club's support on this one. Um, but again, that's just my thought in listening. I, I know we went against the grain with football and uh, let it go and, and according to Mike, we, we had luck. We had precaution, what we don't know for sure. Um. I guess my only, my only concern is, is, is I, and to Jenna's point about the option of going remote. While they're there, I actually proposed that. If you remember back with the football, I proposed going remote. Um, for any student and we heard long and hard from the, the parents that were there as well as the athletic director and as, and others that. Making a football, football player at the time go remote wasn't necessarily good for their academic thing and that the. The mitigation of the risk inside the school would be just as good as if they were completely remote all the time. So I don't know that I'm necessarily in support of. That remote, you can play sports if you go remote for this period because we've sort of voted that down once already, so. I just wanna get my, some of my thoughts out there, that's all.
Shannon?
Um, I actually wanted to just um, a cou- make a couple of comments. First, Andy, I'm right with you as far as I don't wanna force someone remote just to have the same opportunity. You know, education is what we're here for. Sports is, sports enriches the educational environment. And we are not here to compromise the most important part of their reason for being part of our school um, citizenship. Um, you know, the other thing I worry about is I know that we even have students that are not at MHS and they have their own sets of rules for say charter schools and. Private schools, home schools that would be able to participate in sports. And they have a set of rules for MHS-based students and not be able to enforce those kind of environments for others. You're creating an unenforceable, you know, platform. So the, uh, when it comes to what Lori was asking about with that liability waiver or. And I have to say, you know, we're the school district, what kind of teeth does something like that have? You know. We ultimately, because of our nature, I would, I would, I would, I'd be surprised if I was like, oh yeah, that's totally enforceable that, you know, we're, we're off the hook. Uh, even though they're representing our schools and our district, I think Mark may have some thoughts on that, cause uh. But that one just, I, I just, it strikes me as I can't think of anything that they could sign their liability away as they're in our care. So it just seems to me kind of counterintuitive to how we have to do business. Um, I didn't know, um, I, I'm willing to yield to Mark on that one to weigh in, cause I saw his hand up when I mentioned that.
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go right ahead and then after you, Lori.
So uh, so we uh, we have been in touch with our attorneys on the issue of the liability waiver. Uh, when it was a, a, a possibility, um, you know, before. Uh, relative to, to football, um, we, we certainly, um, we have one. Uh, the board would need to authorize its use. However, to board member Barnes's point. Um, it, it has a certain degree of enforceability. Um, but I, I don't think that uh, we're advised that it would inoculate one hundred percent. So um, you know, it, it has some teeth, but if uh. You know, God forbid there were serious illness following that, um, I don't think it is the position of our attorneys that that waiver would be one hundred percent. Guaranteed. Um, so, but if that were to be the case, we, we can develop one quite quickly. Uh, but it would need the board's authorization uh, for that to be used as part of any. Plan or contract. That would be tied on by the board.
Okay, Lori?
I just use my hands a lot. I didn't, I didn't wanna talk.
Okay, alright. Um, so, um, is there any motion? I mean, at least, you know, there's nothing that's required, but I was gonna. No one will make a motion. I will just to get a, just, okay, Jenna?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to let wrestling move forward. I, I, I don't wanna put a whole lot of stipulations on that. I feel like at that point. The. Administration can figure out how to do that safely.
Do I have a second? Uh, second by Andy. Any comments to your second, Andy?
No, like I said, um, given the scrutiny you gave to the other sports and the way that we treated football and the pushback from the Booster Club and the support for the Booster Club. I don't see us taking a different approach for wrestling, given the feedback, so that's sort of my bat, my support, my rationale.
Um, other comments from Shannon or Lori? Shannon?
Um, it, I said this, what, it almost the word when we had the football discussion and none of this feels good. Um, you know, when it comes down to it, uh, denying a child the opportunity that will, you know. Fulfill his high school experience doesn't feel good. So saying no to this motion feels bad. Saying yes this motion and putting additional exposure, uh, potential risk to our students does not feel good. None of this feels good and that's circumstantial from, from what we're dealing with. Um, the one thing I think that's very important, uh, the thing that, you know, when we had our meeting a couple of weeks ago that had me concerned is. You know, when I was at a game and there were coaches not wearing masks and they were getting away with it, it was, there was no consequence. Um, hard, fast, firm. I was horrified sitting there watching a game. Where everyone was in close proximity, no one was wearing masks. Um, it was horrifying. And you know, if that comes to be. Um, it was horrifying. And, you know, if that comes to be fast, firm, and effective, um, practice around that, because that was garbage. And the fact that it was, it was, uh, honestly, it was a spit in the face of district who made the most difficult decision to let football go forward and us as a board that gave them the trust to do it under very specific circumstances that were not followed. So do I have apprehension? Um, with all of sports, of course we do. We have to put every child in our district in our care in consideration for every decision we make. Um, for every decision we ask administration to manage, which is the worst part of this. We're gonna stay home or we're gonna go maybe do our little work or our little bubble. And our administration has to live with these con, with these, with these motions. And that, you know, the consequences, as much as it's our motion, it's, they have to make this work. And Mike, I do appreciate that you're prepared for anything. I do appreciate that you're putting extra effort into keeping it the safest environment possible. I hate to say that I am leaning toward this right now. I hate to say me against it. You've heard my whole thing. Um, but this is a difficult thing and if nothing else, what administration has had to go through these last few months with those, you know, when we did have to shut down a middle school. I mean, you know, because of tech, because of exposure. I mean, we're doing everything we can. And we're, you know, this, this, you know, this does not necessarily align with that. But what I will say is, you know, fast, firm, final. If the, if these protocols are not being met, if these rules are not being followed, consequences. And I mean, you know, from leadership, and I'm not really talking about as much about the students because the students follow the examples of their leaders and those leaders weren't doing it. Which is why I, my biggest problem with this was, um, horrified, horrified. And I don't get too angry or to, um, use passionate words like that too often. I try to keep it to the facts and the data, but that, that's just unacceptable. We're putting a lot on the line with our motion. We know that we're going to, uh, you know, whatever decision we make, it's, it's, you know, it has rippling effects throughout the district. And so with that, I want to say my piece before the vote, but fast, firm, and final. Any just, anyone that's not following the, the standards for safety that are being set to give them such a privilege, you know, of, 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 you know, putting this mitigated risk in our, in our midst. So, um, so that's, those are my thoughts, but again, you know, no patience for, for ignoring the rule, for ignoring, uh, things like wearing masks, sanitizing. There's, there's no half-hearteding this, this practice. So, I just, you know, I don't have patience for it. If I, if I find that there are, you know, I, I will probably ask to put it back on the agenda and have it pulled. We can't have people not following these rules anymore from a leadership position, so. So with that, um, I've said my piece and, uh, when the motion comes to, to go, um, we'll see where it goes.
Lori?
I said, I said. I would, I was gonna say, um, you know, I, I don't know where everyone else is, but, um, do we need, do we need more information from the athletic director? You know, to come back and, you know, he, he has the plan, but he didn't bring the plan because he didn't really know how the board was going to lean. So we hear more information and have more evidence. Um, you know, it, it, it was a difficult decision last time to, to, to make a decision not to have wrestling. However, it, it was a recommendation. We didn't think schools were gonna be wrestling. Um, and, you know, we, we move forward, we have a vote to reconsider, we're, we're, we're trying to decide uh, what's the best course. Um, I just don't know if we need more inform.
Any others? Andy?
Just on that, I mean, according to Mike, he has the, the, the plan. He has something similar to what the other districts have done. Just, you know, that works for him. I mean, it's, it sounds like he has done the diligence. The fact we can't see it in front of us, I don't, it's not that I don't trust what he's doing is appropriate. Um, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna drag this out too much further because the next time we'd have it is two weeks from now and I'm not sure we'd have any compelling data one way or the other, right? So, um, I, I'm inclined to let the vote go. And if we see, if we decide as a board to let it go forward and we see something that changes the dynamics, we could certainly revisit it, so.
Uh Jenna?
I just wanna say, um, you know, I make that recommendation because I trust Mike, because I've seen Mike in action. I know that he will implement policies that will keep kids safe, um, to the best of his ability, even though he has his doubts. Um, he does a really good job at what he does. The other thing I'll say is, um, we're trusting the wrestling families. We're saying to you, Tammy, and to your wrestlers and your families, we trust you. We need you to make the right decisions. If we allow you to go forward, we need you guys to show us it can be done. And that might mean making difficult choices in your own family lives to make sure you reduce your own exposure because God forbid a wrestler gets, you know, COVID someplace else and then wrestling will get blamed for it. And then you'll never have wrestling if there's COVID. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's how that goes. So we're trusting you and, and, and I, and I want to be able to trust that those kids wanna wrestle enough that they're gonna do everything they can to keep themselves safe. And Mike's gonna do everything he can and therefore, with everyone's best efforts, we can give this a try. Because the kids are, it's worth it. It's worth a try, I think.
And I think I'm the only one who hasn't spoken on this and I, um, I will support the motion under, um, and, and not waiting until just before, um, the holidays, closer to the holidays. Um, cause I agree, I think if Mike Sissy has protocols on how he can make it go forward as safely as possible, I trust it. And, you know, I think what I grapple with, with so many things right now is, you know, there's, it's, there's really no black or white in a lot of different ways. Um, when you look at the stuff with COVID, um, it's, everything is risky. Leaving your house is risky. Um, you know, and it's, kids are hanging out, you know, anyways, but that doesn't, you know, necessarily, you know, say, okay, well, there's all these other opportunities. We shouldn't keep our kids safe, you know? But, you know, there was, you know, especially in the fall, when we had to come up with these decisions to allow the fall sports to go forward, those are really hard decisions because there's unknowns and there's no guarantees. And, you know, we had a couple of blips in the road. You know, we had to, um, you know, do a couple of things. And, you know, I would say that if we agree to support it, then we need, um, some understanding and, um, from our wrestling families, you know, that, you know, we may under any circumstances have to say, you know what? We gotta shut it down for two weeks or, you know what, something happened and we just can't do the rest of the season. I mean, those are things that I would want to be out in front, that, you know, we reserve the right to do that. Um, but all in all, I would support it. I don't like the decision, like so many of the other decisions that we've had to make. I don't like it. Um, but I also realize that activities like this are a real important part of our kids' um, mental health right now. You know, it's the only chance they can engage and, you know, in some ways they become more successful in their schooling when they have this outlet, because that's how they thrive. You know, as a young human being that's going through a very difficult time and a very difficult season. Um, you know, these dark months right now are really challenging, uh, probably for all of us, I would guess, and probably quite accurately. So I plan to support the motion, um, but, you know, we can go ahead and call the vote. All right, all of those in favor of moving forward with wrestling, um, as Jenna made a motion for, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Abstain? Lori, so the motion carries four, zero.
No, no, I, I voted. Since I voted yes.
Okay, all right, then the motion carries five zero, fours, five zero zero. Uh, we can move on to the next, um, agenda item and, uh, Tammy, thanks for coming tonight and thanks for representing, um, so well, um, the facts that you've provided to us and we wish you a nice evening. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the update on transition to remote learning. Uh, Dr. Mark McLaughlin in the district leadership team.
So I'm gonna, uh, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to John in just a minute. Um, and the reason is because, um, uh, John has done an outstanding job, um, since, uh, last, uh, spring. Um, coordinating our efforts, uh, with the leadership team. And nothing that we've done has, uh, just been, you know, John's doing. Uh, it's been John, uh, guided by me and guided by our leadership team, all of whom are here tonight. So, um, there are a number of questions presented, uh, by the, uh, to us from the board and, and after our last meeting. And so this is the, uh, team responding. I just, um, you know, I'm just gonna state it right out. Um, there is no team in the state of New Hampshire that I would, uh, put, uh, higher than this team for its commitment to what it has done in the face of unbelievable odds. And no, Merrimack is not the only district who is encountering unbelievable odds. But make no mistake, anybody who's listening tonight, this team is a top rate. Hardworking doesn't even begin to describe this team. This is a team that doesn't rest. And when given a challenge, they need it. Uh, and so I, I just wanna take this opportunity to, um, make sure that the board and the community recognizes, um, that fact and that all the teachers that, um, that work for them, um, are, are equally devoted to doing their best to getting this as, as, as good as we can. We're living in a time where there are no easy answers and not everything can be fixed. Um, but this team is doing absolutely everything it can to, uh, get it as close to, um, uh, to what we need it to be as any that I could imagine. So with that, I would just turn it over to John, who has a, uh, plan for working through the questions with our team tonight. John, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And, um, you know, as Mark mentioned, we've been asked several questions, um, you know, um, from the board over the last few weeks. And, um, tonight I will, uh, work with our entire leadership team to, uh, walk through those in a panel discussion and, and, and talk about those and, uh, reflect how, uh, each school has moved through, um, this period of time to prepare us for, um, remote learning. And, um, so many of these questions we'll address tonight have been, uh, presented to the board previously into the community. Um, there's been, uh, tonight you will hear several more, uh, details about the modification of our remote and hybrid instruction. Um, and we will communicate to families about how, um, we've learned from what we've, uh, done this first, uh, quarter and how we might change. Tonight, the panel of administrators will hopefully supply some further communication and even more evidence about what we've done for planning, um, for our model. There'll be some forecasting too about possible changes that we'll make, um, coming up in the next semester. And we'll also talk about, um, the question that was out there about what would happen to come back full time? What would that entail? And we'll dive into that question a little bit tonight and provide the board and the community with some of, uh, some of those details that really, um, you know, um, guide our thinking every day. Um, I've said it all along, we plan every day, we adapt every day. We work as a team every day to make modifications and move forward. I, I explained this as there's a hundred pieces to the puzzle and you can keep moving them around, but every time you move one, you have to move another one. So, um, there isn't a hundred and thirty pieces, there's only a hundred. So we have to keep on doing within our frame of what we're allowed to do. Within our budget, we currently have what we're allowed to do and with our own creativity, what we're allowed to do. So without further ado, I'm going to, uh, start with my first question and then I'll go building by building. And, um, I'll ask the administrators, if you want to answer, uh, principals or hand to your assistant, I'll, uh, lend to you to do that. So, uh, what steps went into our planning for the two days we had last week, uh, before we went remote? I'll first turn to, uh, MES and Michelle Roman.
Sometimes it takes a few minutes, seconds for my microphone to kick in, so just nod when you can hear me.
You're good, Michelle.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for having us. Um, I'll start with the first question. Um, as you can imagine, as a district leadership team and then as an elementary leadership team, we met a number of times to create a list of the givens for instruction in the remote environment based on feedback from last year and feedback from the remote program that was already in place this year. Our team looked at ways students could have time with their teachers on what had been their independent practice days and continues to be into practice day, inter, independent practice days. This was developed and distributed district-wide. In addition, we worked to outline what the outcome of the two professional days would be and how the days would be structured. At the elementary leadership meetings, we also discussed what communications we would have with parents in order to be clear but not overwhelming with messaging. Following the meetings with the leadership teams, our MES building leadership team met to create the required outcomes for teachers and what parents could expect after those two days. Some of this planning had previously been discussed in the event that we had to make a quick transition to remote. Our planning was to help the teachers complete the items that they needed to get done in order to make the transition smooth for students and families. As an administration team, we met with all PLTs to ensure that supports were in place for students and our staff. So those were the planning that we put at MES into those two days.
Thank you very much. Uh, Reed's Ferry, um, and Kim Yala and, uh, Bonnie?
I'm actually gonna take the first question. I'm Bonnie Paint Show, the assistant principal at Reed's. And it will sound very similar to what Michelle talked about at, um, MES. We as well met with the leadership team and the elementary leadership team. Um, and we used the document that we created with the list of givens and expectations for staff pivoting from hybrid instruction to full remote. We utilized that, um, during our Reed's Ferry leadership team meetings. We created an outline of what needed to be accomplished during the two days, uh, November thirtieth and December first for full instru-, uh, full remote instruction. We created a PowerPoint, uh, to present to our staff to guide their work and answer much and many of their initial questions. These included agreements and guidelines, um, for the work to be completed. Uh, prior to, in preparation to pivot, um, thinking that it could occur, all of our hybrid educators had the opportunity to observe our real educators, um, during their instruction to gain a better understanding of the remote ins, remote instruction. And during the PLTs, they continued to ask questions and provide tips with each other, uh, both during our grade level and our vertical PLT meetings. A system of distribution for materials was discussed and organized to put into place. An assessment of technology need was completed to support our educators' needs during remote instruction. And systems were organized to continue to provide SEL supports for both students and staff's wellness.
Thank you, Bonnie, very much. Uh, now I'll go to Thornton's Ferry and Julie DeLuca and Michaela Chapman.
So, um, I will be echoing a lot of the messaging that MES and RFS shared. Um, just to share inconsistency, uh, we did develop givens both as a district and elementary leadership team. We also met with our building leadership team to share and communicate through these plans. Uh, similar to MES, we met with each of our professional learning teams, which is all of our grade levels. We also met with our support staff to review key messages moving forward and to share a plan for this transition. Uh, we collaborated with the system of care and learning supports team on their recommendations for the transition to remote. We also began planning for special ed services and what that would look like, both at a building and district level. Um, and similar to what Bonnie shared from Reed's, we did a lot of work preparing for material distribution, um, both before the Thanksgiving break and for pickup for families upon return, um, to be able to use those two days to really begin to plan and prepare for schedules and communication with families.
Thank you, Michaela. Um, Upper Elementary School and Mrs. McGill and Dr. Rowe.
Good evening. I don't have a lot that's different to share. I wanna share that we did meet several times with the elementary leadership. We developed our givens and our expectations for those days. Um, we also outlined what we needed to have accomplished. Uh, our assistant principal, Dr. Nicole Rowe and I met several times to talk about what would that outline look like? What do we want teachers to accomplish? So we came up with, you know, agreements or guidelines. Um, we talked about the distribution of materials, uh, the assessment of, you know, accessibility of technology and programs, uh, social and emotional support programs. We met with each of our PLTs. We met with our unified arts teachers. We met with our building leadership team. We met with our unified arts teachers, we met with our building leadership team, our administrative assistants, our tech team. We met with everyone to make sure that we were covering all aspects of of education and programming for students. To make sure that we were prepared for students to come back um on the second of December.
Thank you, Mrs. McGill. Uh middle school, uh Principal Carragher.
Uh good evening. Um so our building leadership team um got together uh and we kind of discussed. Uh redesigning our schedule and trying to reconfigure in order to try to provide times uh really. Quite frankly, probably sounds similar to a lot of what the elementary schools uh in the upper elementary uh had presented in terms of trying to find times. To be able to meet with students beyond just the school day. Uh in which they have direct instruction, but also on the independent and extension days. Uh as a collective um and also based on our previous experience, having pivoted in October to the remote world. Uh we thought it would be really important to provide specific schedules for our students, individualized schedules. Uh which we really, really tried to um tried to be perfect on. Uh I think we did a pretty good job. Uh we also wanted to take the time to update the links that we provided for parents because. Uh between when we went remote in October and and now. There has been the change of a quarter, which means that there's a change in all of the classes. Uh that students were participating in, so it was it was important to get that information. Back into the hands of of parents with the updated links as well as into the individual students.
Thank you, Adam. And uh to the high school, Mrs. Putney, Mr. Zampieri and Mr. Bergeron.
Good evening. So um much as um you know, similar to what the other schools have talked about, we. We had a lot of meetings um with our building leadership team. Um to try to strategize on how to best utilize those two days of planning. Um one strategy that we used with our building team was to have some breakout sessions and divide that team up into smaller groups to. Come up with some options for that increased contact time and um. We really wanted to effectively be able to use that time, those two days of planning, so. Um we did spend a lot of time, our own admin team, the three of us and our building leadership team. And some of the things that we talked about and were planning for um was how to use um time in departments for those two days. How to have role alikes meet so that they could make the best use of that time that they had. Um preparing for supplies and materials pickup for devices. Um also just continuing with those canvas tutorials for our staff. Um fulfilling the technology needs for all staff members. And just um trying to maintain uh really clear communication with the staff in the building around those two days. Um and also just giving them details about um what the um breakdown of the days would look like. As I said before, just to uh make sure it was going to be most efficient. In the meantime, on departments within this high school also met. And they came up with a series of questions or concerns that were brought forward. Um to us and and as we had some questions, we were putting out frequently asked question. Uh responds uh responses to the um whole school so that we could all be on the same page once. Um the thirtieth of November came along. So that's that's uh just a summary from the high school.
Thank you very much. Our real coordinator, Bill Morris.
So in my role as the real coordinator, I meet biweekly, the remote educators, remote support staff and building administrators. In addition, I also provide weekly updates at the district leadership meeting. I meet weekly with John Fabrizio Assistant Superintendent to discuss to discuss supports and professional development needed for remote staff. When I was informed that we were going full remote for the entire district. I reached out to the real educators asking for volunteers to take part in a panel discussion. After the panel was identified, I conferred with each person to discuss my objectives for the meeting. And I provided them with a framework for what they would say. My goal was to have educators who have worked diligently to improve their craft of remote teaching. Share this craft with other teachers in the hybrid model. A panel presentation occurred on the morning of Tuesday, December first and was a success. There were over one hundred K six educators on the Zoom meeting airing their newly expert colleagues. Share tips and strategies for teaching remotely. The presenters had a can do attitude. Some examples of what was shared included. Mastical Elementary Special Educator, Mary Ann Sabat encouraging her colleagues to remember to give grace to students. Families and themselves. Sixth grade teacher Peter Thompson explaining how at the end of each two week block. He invites parents onto Zoom and reviews with them. On what students will be working on in their independent practice days. And finally, Alice Donahoe. Um of Master Elementary School, sharing how she found it valuable to create a classroom um space in her own home. During these two days, I also initiated plans for a panel presentation for secondary newly remote professional staff. And a panel presentation for district wide support staff. Both also required me to seek out panelists and provide them with direction. All three of these events necessitated me to be in close communication with Assistant Superintendent John Fabrizio. Director of Student Services Heather Baca and each of the building administration.
Thank you, Bill. And on to uh Nancy Rose, uh library and media and technology.
I don't wanna forget um special services, I think she was.
No, she's last.
Oh, so we switched the list, okay. So I met, I was part of the leadership meetings at the elementary and the secondary levels, but and then uh I also met with the. District Technology Group. I have, there's the Technicians and Network Administrator Group. The uh Digital Learning Specialist Tech Coordinator Group and then as well the District Library Staff. Um and I think it's important to note that the library assistants in each buildings have been responsible for the distribution of devices to families. And also for staff who did not yet have a device for home use. Um and so there was just a lot of coordination between the meetings that you've just heard about. And then that information trickling back to our operation to try to keep some consistency across the district. Um and it's just ongoing operations that we've been doing. We just pivoted our focus towards supporting. Uh more staff and more students to be remote.
Thank you very much, Nancy. And on to um finally, uh student services with our director Heather Barker, please.
Hi, good evening. So um we were looking at three components when we were thinking about that plan for the use of those two planning days. Um how special education would move into the remote, fully remote for our hybrid students, supporting the general education. How we would support the special education related services in a fully remote platform. And finally, how could we, if possible, at all possible. Um create a pathway for some students who have already shown that they were not able to really access. Education successfully remotely during the spring or during um the sixty percent remote that we've had since the fall. So we have data that we were using. So in terms of planning for the use of the two days, those were the three prongs that we were focused on. The entire special education coordinator team met several times over the course of those days um and every day since. Um they met with their building special education teams and those PLTs that you heard talk about by grade level and building. They met with their building leadership teams. There was very close coordination amongst. The district court uh special ed coordinators because we wanted that consistency. We had the same agreements. I worked with both the elementary leadership team and secondary leadership team. And then worked with the coordinators who were also privy to that uh information through their buildings. So that we would have a cohesive special education delivery model that supported general ed. Special ed remotely and looked at pathways to bring students into the building. I also additionally worked with the uh contracted related service providers and their companies to develop. A fully remote service model for every student receiving related services and then. We also created an in-person service delivery model for the students that we were targeting. Whose data indicated that if there was any way to bring them into the buildings, we would try to do that. We also use this time to develop fully remote uh plans for every single student who has an IEP, including. The coordination of the contracted services, the coordination of specialized instruction. And supporting the core general education program. In other words, there's a lot of coordinating that occurs in order to make sure students. Can access the general core classes that they need to have support staff assist them in those settings. And then additionally, rise up all of the special education and and related services that go along with their IEPs. We then developed the plan, once we had the fully remote plans in place for every student. We worked with each building's principal coordinating team um using data and that face-to-face rubric. That I've mentioned previously here at the school board. Um to identify students, uh prioritizing them from students who absolutely could not access. In any way, shape or form, in a meaningful way, education remotely. Uh and we worked back uh backwards, creating a hierarchy to see how we could create pathways for students into the building. So we then created that plan as well. Uh in addition to that, that would require new transportation routes, food service preparation and planning for their reentry to the school, the facilities. So I worked with um different uh Matt Chevanel, our transportation department. I worked with uh the private contractors who provide specialized transportation, so that all occurred as well during that time. Uh in addition to that, I developed a plan with our team to continue the in-person referral process. And triennial review process in terms of special education evaluations at our school building, so that will continue. Uh both in a live form and in a remote form, depending on what families are comfortable with and how we best can do that safely. And finally, we worked with our SOCal's team and our system of care coordinator Fern Siden. To develop a plan for, we had already started working on this. Um this has come up multiple times in our parent coffees. Parents looking for more opportunities for students, for academic support, for organizational uh support. For uh social opportunities, so we have been working on that and we spent a lot of time coordinating with our support staff. To organize structured actual, you know, zooms for kids and families outreach. Creating published links uh and calendars of activities that would happen at each building across the district. Um so that was part of the work in the plan for those planning of those two days. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Um on to our next question. So um uh principals and and assistant principals and directors. Uh what was accomplished in the two in the two teacher preparation days? When we had them with us, what was accomplished after that time? I'll turn back to um MES and uh Principal Romaine.
Hi, thank you. So you heard a lot of different things that were in the planning, so those were all a lot of the items we worked on. Um at the end of those two days, um we had a number of items that were accomplished, so some, for example. Um the teachers created and provided families with schedules for both Wednesday and Thursday. Of that week where we had cohorts coming in or remotely. Um so that was one set of schedules they had to provide and create. And then also families had to create schedules for fully remote with the moving forward as of yesterday's schedule. So those were done. We also surveyed families for availability on non-cohort days. Um as you can imagine, we have a number of kids at the elementary school level who are in daycare or are in. Um with relatives or childcare is um set. And so we worked with, teachers worked with those families to identify schedules to see who was able to access. Information and teachers on their non-cohorts day, so that was part of the work they did. Um we put together, the teachers put together differentiated materials for the packet pickup. So that involved copying, cutting, finding particular books for kids, organizing. Uh making sure things had directions for families so they knew this was an independent practice activity. Or this was going to be needed on your direct instruction day. Uh we worked to create documents and videos to help families with specific technology needs. Um as things like how to access your child's schedule, where it's password protected. Uh making sure all of the technology needs or families were addressed. We had a few or organized workshops to help teachers make sure they knew the fine points. Of some of our newly purchased digital resources for this year and making sure that we had the tools ready to be used. And that the kids, how to go about teaching the kids on those Wednesday and Thursday days. Um reminding them they've been practicing in the classroom, but it looks different when you're home. Um grade level teams met, as Bill mentioned, with our remote teachers to look at what some of the tips that they have learned. Already this year. Um Heather mentioned the list of students providing schedules, contacting families, working um. With the schedules of the staff in the building to set that up so that that would be ready to go on Monday. Um the, we also created a s- a school-wide schedule um. Sharing platform that is the same across MES, so any parent um at MES will access their child's schedule. In the same place with live links for zooms and times, as that was something we heard. From the spring was really difficult to manage with younger students, so our kids can visit their um teacher's website in the morning. And then follow right through with all of their links throughout the day. Um individual schedules were put together by case managers for students with special education, including some of the the time in the building. As well as other services they're receiving. Um and then we also did some things to keep our MES culture and. Keep kids um seeing familiar faces and to try to keep um the transition as smooth so as it could be. So we recorded things like the pledge um and our morning announcements, which we play each morning for kids. So they can start their day seeing familiar faces. We also worked to create and reestablish our routines. In new classrooms, so in the in the remote environment as opposed to um in our frickin mortar. As well as bring some of those reesta- some of those routines such as our positive incentive programs and things like that. Um into the remote world. So while there were some things that were new to students in our remote world. There would be consistency in things that they would recognize. Um and then we worked with non-classroom teachers. Worked to set up schedules for check-ins, small groups. All a variety of different activities that we'll talk a little bit more about moving forward.
Thank you very much. Reed's Ferry Elementary.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Um very echoing a lot of things that um Michelle just explained. That happened at MES, happened at Reed's Ferry School. Um our grade level educators met in their PLTs to determine. The scope and sequence for what remote instruction will look like from now until they come back to school. Um they developed a framework for their instructional day using the real educator's schedule as a model. And then they published this to families, um a consistent grade level remote schedule, including. Both whole group and small group instruction. Uh they planned for instruction that reintroduced remote learning concepts and ex- ex- expectations. To reintroduce this to students. They developed and planned for daily interaction for all students. With educators in addition to their cohort live instruction days. It includes uh but isn't limited to morning meeting, closing circle, help sessions for students, office hours. Um and uh non-cohort students attending guided groups, uh including math, reading and word work. Uh our educators reached out to parents, providing extra parent Zoom sessions during those days. Supporting families with schedules, also asking and finding out about non-cohort day. Schedules in the families. Um our educators developed and published their Canvas sites for students and families to access links, assignments and schedules. They collaborated with remote teachers on materials um that had been most helpful during their remote experience. Uh our educators connected with their case managers on individual stu- students' needs, including social stories. As well as with support staff and our Title One tutors. Uh we uh worked very. We worked very diligently with our special education planning for in-school supports and services, contacting families and creating additional schedules and lessons for those students to support their needs. We brainstormed, gathered, and organized all the differentiated materials and resources that will be need to be sent out. And as Michelle had mentioned, the glue sticks, the, the, all the materials that need to be home in order for students to access the instruction of the teacher. We created a reoccurring Zoom links to share with families, helpers, and administrators so that we're all connected. They also tested document cameras and other devices needed. They reviewed tools to support remote learning, including whiteboards, breakout rooms, learning apps. Carol Lewis was instrumental in going around the school and providing workshop information for all educators. And to stay connected, we're introducing Reed's Ferry News that will be covering all the happenings that are happening, again, to keep that connection going. And it will be run with Carol Lewis and also the students, which will be wonderful. And we developed a schedule to provide daily support for all students and staff's wellness.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you very much. Thornton's Ferry Elementary.
So many of the things that MES and RFS shared in those two days of planning, our PLTs also met and planned and then communicated with families, grade level schedules that met our district elementary givens, which included increased FaceTime. We also had our classroom teachers attending mock remote schedules with previous remote teachers. In addition, they attended the remote panels and also attended PD opportunities, similar to shared at MES on tools such as literacy footprints, and also tested and made sure all technology was running. Teachers practiced in breakout rooms with their Ladybug devices. They practiced across the building and with each other to ensure that they would have success when they went up and running. We also had all classroom teachers update grade level sites to make sure that information was easily accessible for all families. They also updated remote learning expectations with the advice from remote teachers. And they planned rituals and routines to get students up and running on those first couple of days, all again with the input from their remote teachers. We also had our special ed team, as previously mentioned, developed individual schedules for both remote and in-person, and they communicated closely with each family in order to ensure that those schedules worked for them. We also spent a good deal of time with our unified arts schedule to be able to have opportunities for live instruction, which is something that we could not offer to remote students prior. And so we were able to begin to offer live instruction for all students during this time. So they worked very closely to put together a schedule that would do that. And we also had our helpers and some of the other core members of our building, such as our digital learning specialist and library media specialist, design increased opportunities for FaceTime for students in addition to lunch bunch and groups and open office hours and enrichment groups to begin this week with students.
Thank you very much. Master Call, Upper Elementary School.
I'm not going to share that many things that are that different. Maybe just the approach that we took was a little bit different. We started that first day with an all-school meeting. I wanted to make sure that I reinforced with teachers, you know, what the expectations are, where, what the givens are, what the agreements are. So that's the first thing we wanted to make sure. We also wanted to be able to ask questions or answer questions for teachers. We also wanted to give examples of what, what would large group sessions look like? Like maybe to everyone, the morning meeting, the closing meeting, the read alouds. What small group sessions would look like? Things like office hours, help desks, you know, support sessions, you know, or lunch bunches. What would all those things look like? We wanted to make sure the teachers had a pretty solid understanding of that. We then sent teachers off. We wanted them to create a schedule. We wanted them to increase their contact time with students on those independent practices or those integrated practice days, as well as flex days. So we challenged them to do that. We also had even our unified arts teachers, like our band teacher, creating a band schedule, you know, for students. Our digital learning specialist worked with, you know, making videos, as well as our technology coordinator to make videos to help parents understand how to access your resources and videos for teachers to help. Teachers set up their Zoom accounts, made sure their learning management system was all set up and that their timelines were there to meet with students because we wanted to make sure that they would help to develop those stronger relationships, those rituals, and those, you know, routines that we want so badly to happen. Our allowing your judge coordinator offered several training sessions for teachers on some of the digital platforms that are fairly new to us. So wanted to make sure teachers had that opportunity. Our educators attended a real session with the remote teachers to learn about their experiences as remote teachers, that they could then duplicate in their classrooms. Our special ed coordinator worked with the building leadership team to help determine those students who would need that in-person contact. What would that look like? What would that schedule look like? Our wellness team, our student support team, developed a schedule for wellness support activities to all classrooms. Also, our Canvas training was provided to teachers. So in between their meetings, if they had some time, they could go and continue to learn about the new platform. Also, our teams worked just together as collaborative teams to help plan. What are those first couple of days going to look like? What are those integrated units going to look like? So they had some time to do that. And then we, as a building team, Dr. Rowe and I walked around the building. We wanted to put our eyes on all teachers. We wanted to be visible. We were really thinking about teacher wellness as well. You know, we've done so much planning for student wellness, but we wanted that to be a big part of it also. So we wanted to be there to just clarify information, to answer questions, and just to support them and kind of pat them on the back and tell them what a great job that they were doing. So it's a lot of what we had accomplished at the Upper Elementary School.
Thank you. Master Call, Middle School. I mean, excuse me, Merrimack Middle School. Sorry about that. Merrimack Middle School. Sorry, Marsha, for that.
Well, I answer to both. I'm all right with either one. But I echo again a lot of the sentiments that have been presented prior to. But, you know, as far as, as far as key things, I think just to point out, you know, the students did receive individualized schedules from, from staff members. Everybody kind of took on responsibility, whether it was advisories or homerooms for different groups of students, to make sure that really, most importantly, they would know where to go come Wednesday morning or Thursday morning. We also provided an Excel document that we sent out that was, that was password protected, that had all of the different links available by team for parents. So that way, if, if for some reason their student wasn't able to find their schedule, as long as they knew which unified arts class they needed to be in, art, music, PE, health, they would be able to find that class, click on it, and there they would be able to, to go from there. We had that posted on our, on our website, but password protected so that it wasn't open for the public. But it could be found by parents who needed it in a pinch. You know, a lot of the other stuff we did was related to curriculum. There's a lot of different, it's a lot different teaching in a remote world than it is teaching in a, in a classroom. And that requires a lot of adjusting of curriculum, which requires a lot of work across a department, across a grade level, to collaborate and determine the best way to kind of move forward the different essential learning competencies that were just the keystones of what we're trying to do. So, you know, I guess I would say that, that work was really done primarily through our departments and, and grade level department personnel. So a lot of, a lot of different things to make sure that we continue to be, continue to be synchronized for all of our grade level content classes.
Thank you, Adam. Merrimack High School.
So the building was really, really busy for those two days with a variety of things happening all at the same time. Our departments met as, as teams, and that was an opportunity, as others had mentioned, for the remote teachers to really talk about the strategies that they've used and some of the barriers they'd overcome since the beginning of the school year. And that really provided some really excellent guidance to our other staff members. So it was a chance, I would say we had a lot of technology issues resolved over those two days, devices administered to folks, some training, kind of troubleshooting, just making sure people were set and ready to go technology-wise. As others have mentioned, some videos created, lessons going into the first couple of weeks so that we could make sure that there was alignment among those essential learning competencies between all the course-alike folks, which also included common assessments, and they're working on rubrics, just continuing that work into the next couple of weeks. Just a lot of individual planning, a lot of team planning, decisions being made regarding extra help, office hour sessions, and when those would be held. Staff sending Zoom link invites to their students for their remote sessions and also their extra office hours. And throughout the two days, really getting accomplished what those extra supports were going to be for students and beginning to compile those. The building administration at the high school, we spent a lot of time just compiling information that would be helpful for parents and students as far as reminders about Zoom etiquette, just what the, the processes were going to be so that we could put that in a chart form that would make it easy to read for parents at home. And also just kind of, I would say this was accomplished, just the reminders about changes of schedule and just making sure families were in the loop on that. By the end of the second day, tables and materials were set up, devices were out. People were getting their programming into place for identified students who, those who were able to come into the building and, you know, making sure that that was all going to run smoothly with transportation and staffing, you know, using substitutes the best way that we could. And also just making sure that our homepage and our website was up to date with all the latest information at the end of the day.
Thank you, Sharon. Jump to Bill Morris and the real coordinator.
So again, as, as a real coordinator, worked in conjunction with the remote educators and the district leadership team. Teachers had opportunity to share with their colleagues. Some had excellent tips and ideas for teaching remotely. And we have to remember that remote learning this school year looks very different than it did last spring. And so it's critical for our hybrid teachers to have a very good grasp of this. So this time allowed teachers to expand on their remote toolbox. In addition, hybrid teachers and real teachers were provided time to plan together and to strategize how, how they might increase student contact time on the independent practice days. Teachers came up with good, concrete ways that they could do this, including whole group morning meetings, read alouds, and end-of-the-day check-ins.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to now go to Technology and Library Media, Nancy Rose.
And I'll accept my place this time without arguing. I just, I put it in my brain. I was last, so I apologize for that. So what we were able to accomplish in those two days, but has been continuing since then, is we identified some of the next steps for training in Canvas. And I know there's been some going on at the building level. But we're looking at also across the board what teachers seem to be asking for, what they need. There's feedback from the training day that we had in November, as well as what is sort of trickling up as sort of common areas. So that's in progress. We worked on our support model for staff and for home access. And then we took a moment to walk through all of the district websites to make sure that access to tech support was very visible and simplified. And we have been working on getting the access to different software applications and class links since we are still sort of straddling a couple of different learning management systems and sites. There's a, there's a challenge in making sure that we have access to everything from those different places, but we've been working on doing that. We have been trying to coordinate the documentation that's been occurring at the different buildings. So I can't say enough about the tech team, and a few of those folks have been mentioned tonight. But behind the scenes, sort of all day, there's a constant dialogue going in Microsoft Office Teams among the tech staff at all of the different schools. So there's problem solving going on district-wide continually. And then we're trying to take what we learned from those processes and turn that into documentation, whether it's short videos or putting something online. And then I've been working with John to leverage some, some grant funds to try to find some software that we can use to provide more hands-on or more learning in, in the home while the kids are remote that we can use going forward. So we're working on some licensing and implementation now that will help us for the next six weeks, but then through the rest of the school year. So as those things come into place, you'll be hearing from the schools and teachers. And then also we set up a scheduling system for the digital learning specialists and coordinators to be readily, so that teachers can self-schedule time with them when they need direct support, one-on-one, quickly, which I think has sort of morphed into more teachers looking at those kinds of services to offer to students at the high school level so that students can schedule time with teachers directly. So it's sort of like as we solve a problem, there's frequently other ways that those solutions can be leveraged. And so we're kind of morphing as we go and just trying to learn from each other and share our information with each other as much as possible.
Thank you, Nancy. Student Services.
Okay, so we had those three tasks at hand, one being the rolling up the support for the general education, the second being creating the special education pathway for all those specialized services and related services, and finally, the plan to bring students in, those who need that critical in-person, face-to-face services. So we did develop a fully remote special education system, pre-K through 12, that was used last week, Wednesday, Thursday. So every student in the district has a plan in place for being in that fully remote. So if we ever have to pivot back, we can do that, including students who may come into face-to-face. There may be a time when they can't, so we will be able to pivot to that plan that was created at the building levels. Additionally, we did develop a face-to-face, critical-in-person system, again, from pre-K through 12, for those students that were affected by this hybrid shift to remote. We organized a new transportation schedule for those in-person services, set up a lunch system, and completely revised the delivery of the related services across the entire district to accommodate that shift and changes that occurred in every building's schedules in order to ensure that students got both the general education and the special education that they need per their IEP. The SEL team did develop a variety of scheduled daily and weekly opportunities, and they will share those calendars. Your principals have just shared some of those pieces that will offer opportunities for students and families to connect via Zoom at the school levels and district-wide. We also developed a series of webinars called From Surviving to Thriving During Remote Learning. The first occurred today, December 7th, next Monday, the 14th, and December 21st at 3:00 PM to 3:45. Those are hosted by Fern Sidon, who is our system of care coordinator, and Sarah Kennedy, one of our homeschool liaisons, a social worker that works with us. It was well-attended today, lots of great questions. It's also been recorded, so it's available. They posted it on the universal, Merrimack Universal Learning webpage on Facebook, so it's there. And we could certainly host, post it on the district webpage as well. Other system of care work groups have been meeting. We have a supporting families subgroup with parent representation on that from the community. Additionally, we have a subgroup focused on... our staff and faculty and how to support them as well. You've heard a little bit about that tonight, too. There's a lot of stress and anxiety out in the world today. So those groups are working on that, including how to support families and staff around mindfulness programs, and then providing community-based resources for people to seek help and other services through the community. So those folks are working really hard, and again, every building has a social worker attached to it at this time, so those people can be sought out through the administration, and that's also posted on our webpages. Additionally, we were able to get the special education services and transportation-related services in place to begin actual face-to-face services today for 185 students across our district who were able to come in to get that critical special education and direct instruction. Additionally, we sought out our parents in the MEET program. We're gonna roll that back up and reopen that fully. And of all the parents, everyone was invited back. Seventy-eight families, seventy-eight students are actually gonna return to in-person services this week, bringing the current number up to 263 students who are currently coming into our school buildings, socially distanced, using all of the safety protocols in place. And again, we will try, my goal would be to keep these programs open all the way through. That is all contingent on what happens in terms of our ability to staff them. So those were some really great outcomes from the past, those planning days. Thanks, John.
Thank you. My next question was around communication to parents, and how often do we communicate? I think I'm gonna move forward on that conversation, on that one question, because all of our communications are posted up on our individual websites, different newsletters going out. There's been multiple communications, and I think that question may have been asked prior to us starting to communicate, so I'm hoping if there's any more questions about that, the board can just ask me to forward things to them, and I certainly can do that, because I have been inundated with communication since I asked the communication question. So I'm going to move forward from that one. Next question is how we, I'm gonna ask next question, two of them together for the team, so you can prepare. Michelle's ready for this. How will we contact, how will contact time be increased, and how will Flex Fridays be changed? MES.
I'm Alicia Hansen-Purdy, Assistant Principal at Master Cola. And as far as how we have continued to support the time for remote learning, each teacher is following the schedule that they followed within the building, really mirroring their hybrid model, but now pivoting and making some adjustments to meet the development, the developmental levels of our students. All classroom teachers will see their cohort students for their core instruction. However, all students will see their teacher at least three times on their non-cohort days. So students are participating in learning experiences such as morning meetings, read-alouds, social lunches, social snacks, closing circles. And in addition, small groups have been established across cohorts. Additional groups are being seen by specialists in the buildings, such as our language arts coordinator, our counselor, our past behavior teacher. We're also bringing students who are identified into the buildings for in-person instruction, and teachers have added office hours for students and families to drop in. We've increased tech support for families also with the schedule of our digital learning specialist. In considering our Flex Friday work and how we've modified or have had some additions there, we have also gone forward to have teachers work within their grade levels to identify specific learning activities which are occurring on Fridays. Currently, some staff are adding morning meetings, lunch and recess groups, supporting social and emotional learning. So there is in-person instruction happening in the building on Fridays, as well as small group interventions with professional and support staff. There are also interventions scheduled for some students remotely on Fridays, so classroom teachers and other staff have open office hours for students and families.
Thank you, Alicia, very much. I'll move on to Reece Ferry. Kim, we can't hear you.
Here now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Sometimes it takes a little while, like Michelle's. So it's great to see everybody this evening. Thank you very much. I do wanna say that the three lower elementary schools and the upper elementary school rarely make a decision in isolation of any, only one of the other schools. So we communicate daily, and everything that's been said, you'll hear and you have heard this evening that we're alike and we're saying the same things, because we come up with the givens, we come up with the agreements, we decide what it is that we can do that might be a little bit different or need to be different. For example, the UAs and the sizes of our schools that might prohibit some things being a little bit different, not a lot. So I do wanna say that overall, I'm pleased with how things are going, despite it being really, really tough on families, but our teachers are working really closely with families to make this successful. Like was stated, we're trying to combine cohorts, offer students more time to be together. I do have to say that at the elementary or lower elementary level, it means you having upwards of 24 students zooming instead of 12. So I have heard back from teachers how much they've enjoyed, especially the real teachers, having a smaller cohort and working in small groups and breakout sessions that have allowed them to have more personalized and differentiated instruction. Reading groups are up and running, and I'm also pleased to say that we've just asked all, you know, to take an all-hands-on-deck approach, so that regardless of your role, whether you're a support staff member, you're a preschool teacher, a speech and language assistant, a behavior specialist, that everyone has contact time with students sometime during the day, whether they're joining the Zoom to say hello, or they're actually doing a lunch bunch, or as in today, our behavior specialist doing a read aloud to our fourth-grade students. So everyone push in, push in, push in, and I have to say as well, Bonnie and I spend our day visiting classrooms, doing walkthroughs through the room, so that we can also say hello to the students, because it's really, as much as it's about our teachers, we have excellent, excellent, excellent teachers, but it's about our students being able to see us and those familiar faces. And I would just echo the same with Flex Days. Again, those are agreements that we all made together as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. On to Thornton's Fair Elementary.
Again, I would repeat several things shared both by Alicia and Kim, but just to extend on them, in addition to following the cohort model for core instruction that mirrors our master's schedule, similar to what was shared by MES, we have several offerings by teachers daily for increased face time for all students. So this might include morning meeting and closing meetings, office, open office hours and drop-ins, our kindergartens ending each day with read-alouds for all students, and community-building opportunities for students to join in with their whole class. Also, we are providing small group instruction in literacy and math targeted on students' non-cohort days, depending on family availability. There are open grade-level lunch and recess bunches with helpers for every grade level scheduled daily. They also, all of our helpers have open office hours, set up morning, midday, and afternoon to accommodate for scheduling, as well as teachers having their open office hours. As I previously shared, we now have live opportunities for art, music, PE, as well as club and enrichment opportunities with our library and media specialists and digital learning specialist. And then, as Heather shared on the last go-around, we also launched in-person special ed programs and services today, which was awesome.
Thank you very much. Master Cola Upper Elementary School.
Nikki Rowe, Assistant Principal at the Upper Elementary School. And I think it's important that we reflect back to when we did so much work this summer about the hybrid model and the remote model, and a question that has always been on our minds and comes up for every leadership meeting, whether it's a building leadership team or the district leadership team, is how do we get better? How do we evolve? How do we do things with the limitations that we have, whether it's budget or whether it's infrastructure, teachers? And one of the things that we've talked about since the beginning of the year was, how do we increase face time with students in the model that we're using? This was previously mentioned, that our students, we have found, remote and in hybrid, are incredibly benefiting from having a smaller class. And by benefit, I mean that they are, they have the teacher's attention more frequently. Teachers are able to work with smaller groups. Teachers are getting to know their students very well, because they have half of the students at a time. And so we're constantly thinking, how do we do this, and how do we maintain social distancing, giving teachers and students an opportunity to work in these smaller groups, which is benefiting them, and increasing this time when kids aren't with our teachers? So as people have mentioned, during direct instruction days, students have multiple opportunities throughout the days and across content areas to meet with their teachers. Most teachers start off with a morning meeting, and they end with office hours or closing meeting. Classes that are not with the teacher during that time are invited in so that they can work as 24 kids, and those are times that are very appropriate to have more children, whether it's a read aloud or a read aloud discussion, a morning meeting, a help desk where students can interact with other students that have their same teacher, but aren't necessarily in their cohort. Integrated practice days, we also say a minimum of three opportunities, and teachers have been very creative about that, and we're thinking more and more about what does this look like and what's best for kids. Friday Flex Days, obviously, we want to maintain that and give teachers and students an opportunity to meet together. Another thing that we have to think about is, for our teachers, they're really planning for four different classes. It's not like it was last year in the beginning of the year where they had one class, and they'd plan, and then they would collect data, formative data, and say, okay, this is where my class is. Now this is where I go tomorrow, collect formative data. This is where my class is. Here I go the next day. We have two cohorts, A and B, who come into the school or who have live instruction with a remote teacher, and they move at different paces, because we differentiate a lot of what we do at the elementary school model. So we want to meet the kids where they are, and one group might be ready to move ahead, so we move ahead, and one group might need reinforcement, so we reinforce, and each day, the teachers are planning those two lessons. Also, the teachers have to plan lessons for their students when they're not in school, and they are doing integrated practice, and we want to make sure that those lessons meet the needs of our students. So we have to remember that on Flex Day, we have to give our teachers some time for meeting with their cohorts, for planning lessons. Our teachers meet with special ed, they meet with the unified arts teachers, they meet with teachers that are student support team, they meet with their cohorts, they talk about how do we catch this kid up or that kid? What do we do here? They're still giving extra time during Flex, the Flex Fridays. But elementary school teachers are planning for social-emotional second-step lessons. They're planning for word work and vocabulary work. They're planning for writing lessons, reading lessons, math lessons, science, social studies lessons, and they're going to differentiate these lessons, because that's what our students need. That's the best practices, and we know that our students will need to have that to benefit and to move forward. So on Flex Day, you might see a group of kids that come in who need a reinforcement with a teacher, or, very creatively, I had a teacher on Wednesday have a student who was in a math class, came to the math class late and was really confused, and the teacher said, "Well, what are you doing tomorrow at this time? Can you come back? I'm gonna teach the same lesson. I'd like you to watch this lesson, and then we can meet again if you have any problems." So we're constantly trying to think about ways that we can meet with students, make their time meaningful, and also plan a very meaningful curriculum as we move forward, offer them the curriculum as we move forward.
Thank you, Nikki. And on to Adam Carragher from the middle school.
Excellent, thank you. So students at the middle school are able to join in and participate in our advisory program, which is a way that we start our day off every morning for any student. So, you know, while we do expect the attendance from students who are receiving direct instruction that day, it is open for other students to be able to come and join that group. We also are encouraging students to participate in two different 30-minute times of blocks that we were able to create with our core content teachers. So this would allow for them to be able to provide or get some extra support on those independent working days, in which they would be able to get a quicker answer than maybe they would be able to in the past, where they would ask a question of a teacher and perhaps not hear from them until, you know, after school, or even, maybe even on a Friday, if it was, if it was something they couldn't get to. So we're, again, encouraging students to drop in and participate in those opportunities to, you know, engage their core content teachers. We also did adjust our Flex Friday schedule to try to create an opportunity for students to be able to meet with all of their teachers. What we found was, we had created a schedule that, that allowed them to try to meet with all teachers in a shorter period of time, and so by staggering times where teachers are meeting as a department or as a team of teachers, a school team, by staggering those times, we were able to make it so that there is a group of teachers that is available throughout the duration of the whole Flex Friday. So in theory, you would have the opportunity to participate or to talk to or to seek assistance, to find whatever support you might need, whatever extension you might need in order to be able to, you know, make the most of those Flex Fridays. So, thank you.
Thank you. Merrimack High School.
So a few of the ways that we have increased contact time with students is, well, first of all, through homeroom advisory. Students are checking into their homerooms five days a week. Three of those days are directly with their homeroom teacher. The two days of their, I'm calling it cohort of origin, because it gets confusing. So that original cohort that they're assigned. And on Fridays, all students are expected to check in during their homeroom time. On the other two days, they are checking in through the compass icon on the Merrimack High School homepage, and their homeroom teachers are checking in on compass to make sure that the students have checked in. So really, there is a five-day-a-week now homeroom check-in. Each teacher is providing 180 minutes per week of office hours, extra help sessions. So during this time, students can either sign up for an appointment, and each teacher has ways for students to be able to sign up for an appointment, and they're also able to just drop in to those sessions, because the teachers have open sessions on Zoom during that time. If their teacher is not available during their open time, they can also go to another teacher in the department that might be able to help them, might be able to answer a question during their office hours. So there is that flexibility as well. We have the high school office staff that are actually doing some daily check-ins with students that benefit from that extra just check-in. So if there are any parents out there that are listening and you feel that your child would benefit from that, please let me know, and we will put them on the list for those students that benefit from that daily check-in. We also have Skill Center supports available for students through our learning support assistance. And for some classes, students are now able to join in with another cohort, their opposite cohort in some cases. That is a little bit tricky in some situations, because students are receiving services, or they go, may go to counseling, their family situation, or the availability of devices in the home may prevent that. And some students do really benefit from that more personalized instruction in the small classes. So where possible, some of those cohorts are joining together. In other situations, where the students would benefit from the smaller classes, those are remaining. Some students who are of higher risk and not as able to access their education through Zoom, those students, some of those students are receiving some direct and in-person instruction, as we talked about earlier. Fridays are actually a guaranteed additional time right now for students to be able to access each one of their teachers. There's a two-hour planning collaboration time within departments to start the day from 7:30 to 9:30, just to make sure that those essential learning competencies and the scope and sequence are being followed by those course-alikes. And then there is an eight-period delayed opening, delayed opening schedule. And so students can go through and access each one of their teachers during those periods. They have all the Zoom links for that to be able to Um, they have all the the Zoom links for that to be able to go in and ask questions. Um, so they can actually see each one of their teachers on any given Friday. That's it.
Thank you very much. On to uh Bill Morrison, the real coordinator.
Hi, again in my role as real coordinator, I have been working with administration and the teachers themselves to um support additional contact time with students. Some of the ways this might occur uh during, as you've heard, morning um meeting time, lunch bunches, read alouds, check ins, uh maybe holiday activities, just those kinds of things to build um, you know, a community when you can bring the class together. You know, in terms of instructional, in terms of instructional time, um we know that the smaller group instruction has been very uh effective. Um, I've seen kindergarten teacher Deb Fornia master masterfully assist ten students with a cutting activity. But I can only imagine what that looks like um, you know, with twenty, especially when, you know, her extra helpers don't get to sit beside the students. And uh on the other end of the spectrum, I I really uh got to uh observe a high school AP English teacher, Adam Jazinski, um teach successfully a group of discuss a group discussion utilizing multiple um breakout sessions. It was, it almost like something out of Star Trek beaming in and out of groups. Um, you know, I I just wanna say that I know this is to be true for every educator in the district. My world, the last few months have been remote. And our remote real teachers have worked tirelessly to creatively think outside the box on how to best meet the instructional, social and emotional needs of their students. They they've been some real pioneers. So when we think about um um flex Friday, um and how we can adjust that to a five day a week program for students, we can do it in several ways. Um, you know, and and uh I would say um, you know, for all of us and especially children, this pandemic time has has um caused um everyone to feel um a little bit more isolated. So um co- so providing additional extra help sessions for students, booster groups. Um, teachers may wanna confer with their students about their reading, their writing, their math. Uh, to directly increase in the amount of um student con- some student contact time. Um, you know, it's definitely a a real worthy goal. Um, you know, we'll, you know, and we wanna impact that delivery of supports for students. Um, but you know, but um we, you know, have to, you know, there's always sort of a a gain and a gain in a in a in a in a in a barrier in that um those flex Fridays have been uh used to um um to meet with um remote staff and and hybrid staff and 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 um and the SOCal committee to do their work. And so we will, we will be um figuring ways to do that over the course of the week um so that we can um um maximize the time um with students on those Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It's a good point. As I said before, there's only so many pieces to the puzzle. And when you move one and you move a meeting on a Fridays, now we have to find a time to meet and that means uh another strain on the system and another 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 block to move. So that's a very good point you make there, Bill. Thank you. Uh, moving on to Nancy Rose again for technology.
So my department doesn't necessarily uh directly do things that would um impact what the different schools have talked about and what what Bill has talked about. But um I did wanna share that as the buildings are responding to the need for more instructional time, the the library and technology staff are collaborating behind the scenes to try to figure out ways to make that happen. Um, trying to pull together resources to provide enrichment and extension and and more practice. Um, I also wanted to comment, I sat in on the panels that Bill hosted between the real teachers who've been remote this whole time, offering uh advice and suggestions to the teachers who've been hybrid and going remote. And the level of thought and care from those teachers for what the detail of what they consider that a student needs in order to be successful at at the different levels, I was just blown away. And then um also the para educator staff and the amount that they have taken on to be there for their students to learn technology, to figure out how to support the teachers, both in the hybrid setting, but now that they're going remote with new kinds of technologies to them. I ju- I can't say enough how much I've seen just about every single member of the district staff stretch. Um, and flex because we're outside our comfort zone for sure, but also just continually responding. So my team is just sort of constantly trying to figure out how to continue to help everybody else be successful. Um, and uh and the flex days is another because there has been um some changing in how flex days work, which has um created some opportunities for the tech and library staff to have more time to interact with both students and teachers. Um, and and just being a support to those operations in the schools when they look very different across the different levels. Um, so not quite as traditional as some of the other schools, but we definitely are aware of and and trying to be responsive to what the needs are as they evolve.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, on to Heather Ark again.
Sure. So in terms, you've heard what the building level um principals have said, they've worked in conjunction with the special ed coordinators at the building. We're looking at, and this is again, has come up in repeated conversations with parents through the fall, improving um that contact time between students and support staff, whether that's in a breakout room, attached to a classroom, being present in a class and then able to follow up on those IPD days with students at scheduled time. So families can count on them and the student as they move up developmentally can, we can find pathways for them to set an alarm, have one place where links are, uh ways to connect kids to those supports to make sure that they happen. Additionally, um we've worked, as you've heard tonight, with those helper groups, whether those are behavior specialists, school counselors, the homeschool liaisons, school psychologists, to offer opportunities for social activities with kids, whether those are um offering some remedial supports around um lagging skills or enrichment opportunities for kids. There's been a lot of discussion around how could we bring sort of like co-curricular club type activities to kids uh across the district as well. And I've worked very closely with Bill going to um the remote team and the real educators. I I really have to echo what Nancy said. I've sat in on those panels as well and it was remarkable uh and really powerful. The same thing has been happening in the parent conversation group where parents um over the past two weeks have come who over the late summer were incredibly stressed and terribly anxious because they, for whatever reason, had to choose the fully remote. Um, and were afraid, didn't know what was gonna happen. Those same parents came back, many of them, and shared success stories about how the fall went, how different it was from the spring and just the the positive energy uh and the level of sharing was, it's it's amazing. Merrimack is an amazing place uh on so many levels. Additionally, you've heard tonight, having more office hours, teachers, so students uh who are at risk or who uh have educational disabilities have access to their classroom teachers, special educators have more office hours. Uh, there's increased contact time on those IPD days, whether that's with directly with a special educator or the support staff that supports that student in the general it setting or the special ed setting. Additionally, we have those parent webinars. We're continuing to do outreach with our parent community. And we are actually in the works of putting together some parent panels where parents, parent to parent are supporting each other with ideas, what's worked for them. Um, lots of great ideas out there and lots of great sharing uh on the universal website on Facebook with our advisory group. And tomorrow, we have a parent uh coffee conversation that's focused on um supporting our students as they move remotely. And we have uh BCBA, a speech and language path, an occupational therapist and a physical therapist coming to answer questions, offer suggestions, actually interact at that granular level with families and their children um through the coffee. So that's from one to three. And we'll continue those. It's kind of fun because even on off Tuesdays, so when school's not in session, we've agreed to continue to have that time because families have found it really valuable. Not only to have opportunity to connect with the school district, but to connect with each other. So again, Merrimack is a pretty magical, special place. I will say that. John?
Thank you, Heather. Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna pause there and um that really was the part of of some of the questions that led to where we are today with our planning. And then the next two questions are around what would have to change for fully um full time in person. And then the final would be about what changes in the in the next quarter. But I wanna pause there and and send to turn back to the board and say, is there any questions so far about what we've planned or where we've gone to this point um as a team?
So what I would su- um, I was gonna suggest we just go through um the rest of the presentation and then ask the questions so we don't get in some loops of questions. I know we have a lot to cover, if that's okay with everyone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then I'll continue. All right. For the next question, what would need to be in place or protocols changed to return to full time in-person instruction? Back to you at MES.
So to consider bringing back all of our students full time for in-person instruction, we would need to relax our six feet um social distancing protocols down to three feet. So right now, with a limited number of students in the classroom, we're able to maintain six feet of distance most of the time, except um with our youngest learners, obviously. So we would have to go down to three feet um in order to have students back in the in the building. Um, with that, it could result in more students and staff needing to quarantine. We have had a couple of cases at Master Cola and due to the hybrid model and the social distancing, it did not result in students having or staff having to quarantine as a result of cases in the building. Um, I'm imagining that would be different if kids were all within three feet of each other. Um, with more students being, if more students had to quarantine or be out of the building, um, we would, we may need additional staff to be able to provide a quality remote slot and hybrid transition program for students coming who are going into quarantining if there were more of them. Um, we would, we would obviously have to continue to evaluate staffing needs due to the number of staff that are still not able to work in the building due to pre-existing um whether it be childcare or um their own health or someone in their family. So we'd have to continue um to monitor that. And um it would also, it could mean moving students from one teacher to another to in order to keep our numbers equitable and manageable. Um, if we were not to relax the social distancing protocols, then we would need more space for students, whether it would be portables or using the cafeterias and gyms um to separate kids. We just don't have the room within classrooms to keep the number of students so between um, you know, fifteen, sixteen and twenty-four, twenty-five students in a classroom, um six feet apart from each other. So those are some of the things that would, we would have to look at for bringing kids back at MES.
Thank you. Uh, Reed's Ferry, would you add to that? What what would you add?
So this is Cindy, just real quick. I just have a request. If when you go through the other two elementary schools, if you could just look at anything that Michelle didn't mention that might be applicable for the elementary schools, uh just to save us, you know, some any redundancies would be appreciated. Thanks.
And I, and I, you know, Cindy, I thank you for that and the redundancies. And some sometimes it's because of the buildings have larger populations. Some of this may change a little, but that's why we're going building to building. It's a little bit um different with some of our sizes of our elementary schools. So I'll I'll go to uh Reed's Ferry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, good suggestion. And um I have to say, when we, over the summer, we worked as various task force within task force, like an infrastructure task force, uh health and safety trap task force, uh curriculum and uh assessment task force. And these task force include included um people, you know, staff from across the district. So uh for for me to say what we would need um is a little bit premature uh outside of working with the really great minds and um in a task force. But off the top of my head, I have to say, I echo what Michelle says. Um, but at first, we would start with those task force to make sure that we are all together and we're thinking about every little um detail. And um I do have to say too that we'd have to have a commitment to probably not follow the um the New Hampshire um Health and Human Services guidelines, whether that be that we go down to three feet or zero feet. Um, for that, that would definitely be something that would um be a a pretty monumental decision um to make. And if we did not have those guidelines, I think that we could, if we didn't have this um social distance guidelines, then obviously we could bring students back. Um, so the other things that I was thinking about is like an increased tracking system for travel, family travel, staff travel, student travel. Um, and if there's a vaccination in place, that's some sort of guidelines about requirements for vaccinations. Um, and again, um increase in teachers or perhaps portable classrooms if we were to re- maintain distancing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Julie in Thorndes, or Michaela?
Good evening. Actually, it's gonna be me for right now. So it is hard going third a little bit, especially when you share so many commonalities. Um, first of all, I I think that I'm so thankful for all of our staff and because we've been able to prove that we can actually change uh and pivot very quickly, which is something that we've learned over the year. And so I'm so thankful to the staff and this leadership team for actually being able to answer this question and we're getting better and better at. Um, I I think it's, I agree with Kim and Michelle and all the teams. There's nothing more that I can say that would be different, except for at Thorndes, we would need some more um some of the positions that we have open. Um, for example, Title One, we haven't been able to visit uh fill those positions, pair our educator positions. We would need more support in special ed in terms of case managers and we would need more UA support. So we've been very mindful of how we can support with keeping our costs down. Um, but certainly there would be some considerations from a staffing perspective. The second piece uh that is really the most important piece is, and it goes back to the discussion that the board had during wrestling. And I think it's so relevant and something that Mark has been saying, I don't know, since June at least. And that is uh we need our community to have a shared responsibility in making this happen. And with that, most importantly, the trust that you extend and continue to extend to our sports families, we need that same level of mutual trust. And so sometimes during these major transitions, we have to make some hard decisions. We may have to move kids to different classrooms with different teachers. We may, because we're relaxing social distancing guidelines, have to take classes and meld them together. We may have to be very flexible. We may have to do things that are different and hard for families. And I ask families to trust us and to know that we we are trying our best. We're not perfect, but to to provide that mutual trust and to continue to contact us. And also, when we're 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 contacting teachers to just as much as we're asking them to do many things, that we have kind and respectful discourse. And um that is really important during this ever-changing time. And so if I can emphasize anything that we need, if we're gonna go back to full um all kids in, we need that shared trust, that shared accountability. We're going to rely more and more on families to make sure that those kids are screened and our kids are screened so that we can keep everybody safe. And I can't just emphasize that enough. And I know I've worked with many um in around this board. And six years ago, we came and we had an idea about a system of care and you trusted us. And I asked for that again. And I think that if if we have that trust, we can do anything.
Thank you, Julie. Um, upper elementary school.
Thank you, Julie. I so agree with that. Um, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot more that that I can add that hasn't already been shared. Uh, when we approached this question, we looked at it in two ways. And one was looking at it, if you expect us to follow the New Hampshire DHHS guidelines, what do we need? We need to duplicate everything. You know, cuz if we want that six foot, you know, uh separation, if we want to make sure we're keeping everyone safe, just we need to do that. Now, if you don't want us to follow the New Hampshire DHHS guidelines, then there are a lot of other things that we can do. But I think those things have already been shared. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we share, we looked at that in in two ways. So I guess it would depend on if we're gonna follow those guidelines or not. That would determine what we would really need at that time.
Thank you. Um, Adam, middle school.
Um, so definitely echo a lot of the thoughts that have
Um so definitely echo a lot of the thoughts that have already been uh laid out for you. Uh in terms of the social distancing and you know, breaking with that protocol. Um you know, I think that there would likely be uh need to leverage larger spaces. Um you know, for when a situation does occur where a staff member is unable to uh attend the school due to illness. Um that we would be able to, you know, have a group of students that would gather, you know, say the cafeteria. Um and we'd be able to manage and and basically be a housing spot for them. Um and during that, during that time while that staff member was recovering. Um you know, I think the other thing that that does cross my mind, you know, when it comes to the six foot distancing is is obviously. Uh there are, there are definitely, it's important to potentially protect and and take care of staff members and 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 others. Which would maybe be providing some extra uh different protective measures for staff. Um you know, whether that be, you know, different PPE or or barriers or shields or something like that in order to be able to. Make it so that they are able to um, you know, take care of themselves as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. High school.
There are a number of areas that we considered on this question. Um the first one is that um. We do have an English wing right now that we're not able to use um because of higher CO2 levels. So that is working out okay because we have um some staff that are out of the building. And if everyone were to come back in, that could be problematic. Um we would also have to go to three feet um in between each student. And we felt that we would need plexiglass barriers in between student desks. Um Pete did some research on this and we would have fifty six rooms with twenty four desk combos. And thirty six rooms with tables and it would be about eighty thousand dollars. Um for us to be able to accomplish that in order to create classrooms with enough barriers um for there to be. Um some safety in between. Uh we do have a lot of our furniture currently in some of the storage trailers on the property. So we would need time to be able to get classrooms reorganized and uh shaped up. We do have concerns about lunch. We can fit a hundred and sixty students in the cafeteria currently. Um which is um we are having students eat lunch in the cafe, um in their classrooms right now, but with twice as many students. Um we don't know um how problematic that would be as well. We also in the past use the cafeteria in case we um have um a shortage of subs, which we do right now. We don't have enough substitute teachers. And so if we had to send students to the cafeteria, we don't have. Um the space to properly keep them socially distant right now, anything over a hundred and sixty students. Um also before school, as students arrive, we use the cafeteria and the gym as sort of holding tanks for kids. Um because as they walk around the hallways, they do not stay socially distant um in the high school. So we would require a lot more monitoring of students. We'd have to let them go right to their classrooms. And that would be a little tricky because some students come in beginning at seven o'clock. And um to um they would end up just walking the hallways and and probably congregating. So that's a worry that we had. Um there will be more need on more cleaning needs, especially if we went with the plexiglass um barriers in between. Um we're not sure with transportation how STA would uh be able to transport double the number of students. Um given the bus requirements for um the current requirements anyway for um distancing. Um our nurses' office, if this was the beginning of semester two, we're still in the middle of cold and flu season. Um we know that a lot of students will be going to either nurse um health office one or health office two. We'd have to ensure that we had enough nursing staff um to be able to properly supervise students. And isolate students who have um any COVID type symptoms. Um yeah, and finally, it was just about the substitute teachers and worried about the overflow and where we would put. Extra students if we didn't have coverage.
Thank you, Sharon. Head on to uh Bill from the Real, Real Program.
Uh so as you, as you all know, my um in my ru- role as real coordinator, my focus has been on uh making that model sustainable. And supporting those families where remote learning uh best meets their needs. And as Heather spoke earlier, there have been families on vocal that um that that this model does meet their needs. Um and my, also my hope is that um you know, keeping with um Dr. McLaughlin and and Assistant Superintendent. Um Brizio's vision that we um that remote is something uh viable for the future. My hope is that um we will may eventually bring back some of our homeschool students or others that have left the district. Now, um I do believe that it's possible that if the district returns to full, um you know, um full. Um to f- full-time in-person instruction, there may be an upswing of parents requesting. To go fully remote, parents who may have been comfortable to have half the number of people in the building. But not to have schools that are completely filled. And um if that happens. Um then um if we should have a significant increase, there will maybe a need for additional remote staffing to offset this. And presently, we have um fifth grade cla- remote classrooms with very high numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um Nancy Rose in technology.
Uh so as you're listening to these different scenarios, uh what I think becomes evident is we would need to be able to provide. Technology both on premises and at home. One of the challenges with hybrid. Is we have students in school for a few days and school, students at home needing technology. And especially at the youngest levels where we wouldn't really expect them to to carry that technology back and forth. So there would be a need for more devices. Um I think I've let it be known in the last several meetings. Uh we have devices that due to shortages have not arrived yet, but that are on order, so that will help. Um I think another challenge would be supporting the additional devices in the schools. And so we've been able to leverage some of the um the grant money to help us beef up our infrastructure to be ready for that. But um it's gonna take us a little time to get that all in place. Uh and then the tech support to go with that, um as we have more reliance on devices, more reliance on systems. Um we are also looking into some cameras that may give us more flexibility at the middle and high level especially. Um for imagining, i- if we were to go back to full time but have a handful of students who are remote per class. Which might not warrant a full remote class, we would have to look at, are there ways that we can use technology to include those students? And there's a lot of different factors that need to get considered, including privacy and the challenges for the teacher. How do you manage a classroom in two different locations? Um but all of that would need to get sorted out and put in place with expectations and and policies and procedures to go with it. Uh along with the infrastructure to support it. Um not to say that it's not doable, it's just all of the things that would have to be in place. And then another factor, I think, is attrition. We have um devices out in households and they don't always come back. Ready for prime time. And so that's another factor as we start having to inventory what it is that's out there and the condition that it comes back in. We may end up with some repair and replacement needs. Um so that's the tech part.
Thank you very much. Um and finally, uh Student Services with Heather.
Sure. So you've heard a lot of this echoed over and over. A big piece would be a reliable workforce. Um we've had two positions open, two teaching positions in special education, one at the middle school and high school. In our special programs. Uh the one at the middle school was filled at the end of quarter one after a lot of outreach and trying to find. An appropriate candidate. We have a position still currently open at our high school, never been able to be filled this year. We have no applicants. Additionally, paraeducators, we advertise all the time. Uh we have been able to fill very few of those positions. So I have had to reach out to private companies to hire RBTs and other creative solutions using contracted services. To fill in in both the hybrid world and the remote world where we needed additional student supports. So the biggest one for me would be a reliable workforce if we're gonna bring all the kids back. Additionally, the um realistically, not having people need to be quarantined, so uh. Or having to socially uh self-isolate, excuse me, whether if they have symptoms. Uh you know, just an example, we, as I said earlier, we are bringing students in. But I already have two folks who have to quarantine. Who would have been, who had volunteered to come in and offer live support, so they'll have to reverse Zoom with their students. Until they're out of that. So again, the reliability of the workforce becomes critical. If we're thinking about bringing all the students back into the school buildings. Because some of the things you're hearing are things like using large spaces to warehouse kids, to place them in in large groups. Because there aren't adults to teach them and actually do the educational part. So it's a place for them to go to do sort of like the IPD day type thing, except in a very large setting. So it's supervised by someone. So I think the most important thing we all need to be thinking about is a reliable workforce. Um and as I said, we haven't been able to fill our current positions that are open. I worry about the continued need through the winter. With all of those pieces. Um at this point, we've only been able to offer split services. Due to the social distancing necessary and the availability of staff. So you would either have to stop following the DHHS for uh recommendations. Or um and find a source for staff to bring kids uh back into the building full time.
Thank you. Um I think I'm going to uh right there, pause right there. We have one final question, but I'm gonna hold on that, I think, for tonight. Because I think it it may be with some of this information we have and all the stuff that we have presented so far. I wanna hold off talking about next semester and our and our cohort model till we kind of uh make some uh, you you know, get further through our remote time. And uh start to return our kids into our hybrid model. And at that point, we can make some appropriate decisions on where we go for next semester. Um I I wanna thank the team. Um I think that um it was a a lot of detail. And this is detail that goes into our everyday and the evidence of all the hard work and the evidence of all the the collaboration that needs to happen. With each one of your players in each of your buildings and each of your areas. So um at this point, uh Cindy, I'll turn it back to you and uh entertain any questions the boards, board may have.
Okay, board, any questions? Lori?
I just have a few, I just have a few comments. I'm gonna try to make it quick. Um we understand that adjusting from remote. Uh from in-person to remote is very challenging. And we heard about the planning, classroom instruction, clear objectives, student engagement. Heard a lot of really good things that are happening, the five-day-a-week check-in, the office hours. Um I personally have um grandsons in the uh school district and their instruction during remote has been exceptional. And um you know, I know teachers are working really, really hard. I appreciate Nancy Rose's comments that. The school district is stretching, they're growing, they're trying to, they're trying to support the team. And um I I appreciate that the school leaders continue to hear the concerns of our community. And uh and and keep working to provide more opportunities. Um I just think that um I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Andy, go ahead.
Um so first of all, I wanna thank all the administrators who who've chimed in on here. There's a lot of detail. I don't think there's any way you can succinctly summarize this, you know, webpage or something like that. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of questions from parents as to what do they say about the elementary school? What do they say about the middle school? They didn't listen. So the first question is, and I have no idea this can be done, is there a way we can somehow summarize or maybe point to this thing just so people can get it? Cuz it was a a lot of very good information packed into about a hundred minutes if I calculated it correctly. Um but the, so that was more of a comment. Uh the the other thing is, is that um. One of the differences between now and at the beginning of the year is we do have districts that are doing a bunch of different things. As as everybody's pointed out, every district's different in terms of their staffing, their 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 demographics, their their population. The building structures and everything like that. So you we can't measure ourselves against one district to the other and say, well, we should be doing this, we should be doing that. But I think there's an opportunity for us to get input from some of these other districts that have chosen to go back full time. And find out what the challenges are that they run up against and addressed and and how they've gotten around them. There may be roadblocks that prevent us from doing some of the things that other districts are able to do, but maybe they're not. So I think one of the things to get to John's point about not making plans for second semester. I think that we have a course that we're plotting to get us through through this remote time and then back to hybrid for the remainder of the first semester. But for me, as a board member, I'm gonna be looking for information of ways that we could adopt and adapt. And look at whether it's feasible to bring, to really have a full back and a full remote model rather than a hybrid. Is that feasible? What are other districts doing that we could learn from and leverage to do it? Uh I do wanna make a comment. I, while we're sitting here, I did pull up the DHS site that talked about separation of students. And it says while every effort should be made to find six feet of distance for this class for desks, for example. It says three feet is the minimum. So st- districts that are using three feet are not breaking any rules or DHHS guidelines. I think that there are are opportunities to look, say, hey, a district has done three feet. How is it working? Are you having outbreaks? What are you gonna do? So I'm I'm not s- guiding you in a direction. I'm saying, let's get as much data in front of us as we can. So when we start coming out of the remote model, we've and we plan for the second semester. We have as much data as we can so we can sit here and make an educated decision. And if we ended up going where we've been going, then that's fine, but at least we'll have had the data in front of us. So that's sort of my comments. But again, I appreciate everybody. The detail you've gone through has been really, really good. I really appreciate it.
Can I just uh?
Sure, go ahead, John.
Just uh talked about where this information is and I'll I'll just highlight, I'm gonna just um. Each one of our our schools has their own way of, uh as I said, we didn't, the communication question, this is all out there, Andy. And I'll tell you that it's it's been out there and since the, since we've started this planning um back last week, it's all out there. It's out in multiple pages. Sharon Putney put out a a letter with links on every possible thing that's posted on her site. That you can go see. Julie DeLuca in Thorndes has an amazing um um hawk, help me Julie, what is a hawk uh?
Hawks happenings over twenty thousand.
Happenings.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then uh Reed's Ferry talked about their their upcoming newsletter and I think Marcia has put out plenty of newsletters. Adam does a weekly address. Um I can go down the line um to 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 MES, I know, has put out multiple emails and messages. I think go down the line, talk about the real coordinator puts out a message every Friday.
So 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 John, let me, let me, so obviously you've got everything that's there.
Yeah.
Look at, look at somebody like me who doesn't have a kid in the district or doesn't have a focus of one. Just having something centrally that acknowledges that those all exist and then pointers to them all would just be a help. I'm not asking you to duplicate it. But it's like, like have a cheat sheet saying, you know, hey, there was this presentation, here's the information on what all the schools are doing. If you wanna know about Reed's, go here. Thorndes, go here. That would, even just something simple is that would be helpful. Cuz I don't want you guys to reinvent anything. But just provide the breadcrumbs to get there. I think that would be more than efficient, so.
Thank you. Yep. We can do that.
Did I see Nicole? Did you have a question? No? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is that Jenna? Okay, go ahead.
So um so Meep is opening back up. That's really an exciting thing. I I have a question. I don't know off the top of my head how many kids that means. Like, how how many kids is that? They're coming back in full, right? Not in a hybrid model? Did I understand that correctly?
Jenna, Jenna, right now, there's a hundred and seventy students enrolled. Seventy eight of them will be coming back and it will include both uh neurotypical peers and students with IEPs. Because that program by its nature requires both. Uh and those parents wanted their students to come back. So that program is going to come back and that is very consistent to, so. I love um what you said, Andy, because I actually have been on a lot of calls with the directors across the state. And looking at how different districts are doing it, but many of them have their full preschool program in place. We offer it to everyone. So I do think that is an interesting little forecasting for if we were to come back fully, you may have more families choosing to stay remote. So um that we offered it to every family. Out of those hundred and seventy, seventy eight chose to come back in. To that, those classes are very small to begin with. We're talking four or five students. So even if we had to combine. A class, if a teacher had to be out, the the opportunity to keep that open, hopefully, again, this is all, you know. A class, if a teacher had to be out, the the opportunity to keep that open, hopefully, again, this is all, you know, fingers and toes crossed. Will be uh of all of the programs, it. We actually modeled most of the other special ed in service during this time off of how the preschool actually operates. So yes, MEEP is coming back.
Okay, that was, you actually answered my question just uh interestingly about how many parents chose it. And just the fact that it's gonna be an interesting experience, experiment, having kids back in school. And I'm gonna actually stop my question there because my iPad's about to die, and I think I'm probably just gonna cut out here in a second, have to figure why I go back in.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your busy schedule and coming, you know, for so late on a Monday night. We really appreciate it. Best of luck as we continue to move forward, and certainly we wish you all a very happy holiday season.
Thanks, everybody.
Great, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is overview proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school district budget. Uh, Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. So um, in the midst of uh. The current situation, we have also uh prepared a budget for the uh next fiscal year. So as is tradition on this night, uh if you'd allow me, I will uh read to you my budget message. So the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two proposed budget reflects the consideration of five priorities. As broadly articulated by the Merrimack School Board in its collective budget message to district administration. And the impacts, both known and unknown, of the global pandemic. The five priorities are technology, safety, maintenance, personnel, curriculum. The proposed budget also recognizes the need to strike a balance between meeting the needs of a large and complex system. And acknowledging the financial insecurity felt by so many in our community as a result of the nearly year-long pandemic. As a result, the proposed budget was developed with a goal of level funding. While the process by which this budget was developed was founded on a consideration of the five priorities named above. Budget of uh, the budget we present tonight does not request equal financial support for every priority. This is due to a number of factors unique both to the circumstances of this past year. And as a result of care taken in previous budgets to account for certain recur- recurring priorities. Technology. Over the past decade, the Merrimack School District has made significant investments in computer hardware, software, and infrastructure. In an effort to support twenty-first century learning goals. This continued focus on technology has helped students and staff make significant gains in the use of instructional technology. As a component of an evolving teaching and learning model. However, these planned, budgeted, and appropriately scaled technology enhancements did not anticipate a once-in-a-lifetime global pandemic. The resulting technology needs to support full remote learning last spring and hybrid and remote learning this fall and next spring. Have been met by utilizing resources made available to our school district through its aggressive use of these available federal funds. This budget reflects a need for supplemental support to meet the needs. To to meet the continued challenge posed by the pandemic and the likely permanent changes to teaching and learning that it has caused. In light of the previously described effort to balance school district needs and community challenges. This budget does not include a request for funds to support the goal of achieving one-to-one computers. For all district students. Instead, it is our recommendation to put this request as a warrant article for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Safety. Safety in the context of the pandemic's impact on this budget refers almost exclusively to materials and efforts. Related to virus prevention in our schools. Again, much of our virus prevention efforts, which to this point have allowed the district. To remain transmission-free within our schools. Have been paid for using federal funds available for this and related purposes. This budget reflects an ongoing maintenance of those efforts in the next, in the next fiscal year. Maintenance. Our district has engaged in a consistent, well-planned, and long-term investment in the maintenance of district assets, specifically our schools. They are the pride of our district and serve the town in innumerable ways well beyond their primary use as learning sites. This dedicated and planful attention to our school building's infrastructure provides an opportunity to temporarily shift priorities. To other areas of the budget requiring more attention as a result of the pandemic. The proposed ten-year capital improvement plan recently approved by the District Planning and Building Committee. And currently under consideration by the Merrimack School Board. Prioritizes a ten-year focus on ventilation improvements in classrooms throughout the district. As with one-to-one technology, this budget does not include a request for funds for ventilation in the upcoming fiscal year. Instead. It is our recommendation to put this request as a warrant article for three hundred thousand dollars. Personnel. Last year, we discussed the anticipated five-year trend in student enrollment. To increase annually by between thirty and fifty students. Certainly, that trend was interrupted by the unanticipated effects of the pandemic. Resulting impact on student enrollment, no growth, minimal decline. Was offset by the challenges posed by effectively operating two concurrent systems, hybrid and remote. Despite an essentially static enrollment this year, personnel needs exceeded expectations. In order to accommodate the variety of challenges posed by staffing two systems in the pandemic. These challenges were met by creative deployment of available staff in conjunction with the additional staff requested in last year's budget. The most recent enrollment report. Prepared for the district by NESTEC, the New England School Development Council, anticipates a return to enrollment trends expected in the current fiscal year. In other words, this budget anticipates an enrollment in twenty-one, twenty-two. That more closely aligns with that plan for in the current twenty twenty-one school year. As a consequence, we feel that the current staffing model will support a return to enrollment growth next year. Therefore, with two exceptions, this budget does not request additional staff. Number one. Uh, Remote Education Academy for Learning, the real coordinator. The pandemic has required an extraordinary amount of coordination to ensure. That the experience of remote learners is equal to that of those electing the hybrid model. This coordination has included at a minimum support and training of educators. Guidance and support for families and students. And coordination between remote and hybrid educators to ensure as much consistency between the models as possible. The pandemic has revealed an interesting option that some of our families have suggested they might wish to take advantage of in coming years. Specifically, the possibility of maintaining remote learning either permanently or as needed. Other potential advantages of supporting ongoing remote education include, but are not limited to. Supporting students with attention disabilities, students who would otherwise be suspended due to behavior infractions. And students absent due to illness or injury. In all cases, students could maintain an uninterrupted educational connection to their learning. In cases and under circumstances that might never before have been available. In order to provide these options and to support an innovative approach to distance learning in the future. This budget includes a coordinator of the Remote Education Academy for Learning. Number two, technology support. The growth of technology as a fundamental component of our learning model has been accompanied by the need for a team that can support its infrastructure and the maintenance of existing services. As well as the necessary growth required to maintain currency with twenty-first century learning goals. To achieve this goal, this budget includes a position, uh, an additional position of technology support. Finally, the district is currently in negotiations with the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association, or MESSA. And anticipates presenting the resulting contract proposal as a warrant article. Curriculum. Curriculum development initiatives over the past decade have included art and music, physical education, science, and math. Current initiatives include social studies, oral language, English language arts, and health. And an ongoing investigation into online and print resources to support advances in technology and learning. All curriculum initiatives, past and future, occur in planned and scheduled phases. This budget does not anticipate any new curriculum implementation for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. In outlying years, there will be requests for funds to support curriculum areas currently under development. And a renewal of our recently adopted math program. As in the past, these requests will be staged over the course of multiple upcoming budgets to avoid any excessive single-year budget impact. COVID-related expenses. Well, news of a potential vaccine raises significant hopes of a return to normal schooling next year. We cannot build a budget that does not allow for certain unanticipated needs that might arise as a result of ongoing virus impacts. Or needs arising from the effects of the pandemic on our learners and learning. As a consequence, this budget proposes the establishment of a COVID-related expense line item. To be dedicated exclusively to needs arising from or related to the virus. The proposed one hundred thousand dollars in this account comes directly from savings in our technology line realized. By the use of available federal funds to defray technology costs that would otherwise be reflected in this budget. We anticipate that any request to expend funds from this account. Would be shared with and approved by the Merrimack School Board prior to any final expenditure. Cost drivers. Health insurance. As with most school district budgets budgets over the years, the cost of health insurance is a significant cost driver. This year, the district's guaranteed maximum rate, GMR. Shared recently with the Merrimack School Board is nine point five percent, translating into a five hundred thousand dollar increase in our operating budget. As in previous budget years, if the actual rate is lower than the maximum, the difference will be returned to the taxpayer. However, we must build this budget anticipating no reduction in this rate in order to have funds available, available to cover the rising cost of healthcare. New Hampshire Retirement. Another significant cost driver in recent budgets has been due to increases in the district's contribution to New Hampshire Retirement. This contribution falls into two categories, professional staff and classified staff. This year, the district's retirement contribution has increased from seventeen point eight percent to twenty-one point two percent. Or three point four percent in the last year alone. The cost of the increase for professional staff is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The cost of the increase for classified staff is three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. This increase in cost for classified staff is offset, however. By the savings realized after the last payment of bonded debt for the high school new addition in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Summary. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed administrative budget is eighty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Four hundred and sixty-three dollars. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one approved administrative budget is eighty million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, sixty-three dollars. The proposed administrative budget is one point four five percent more than the twenty twenty-one approved operating budget. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two default budget as required under RSA forty colon thirteen. Is eighty-one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The proposed administrative budget is thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars below the default budget. I respectfully submit that to the board, and uh normally, at this time, we would um have passed out the budget books. But because we're virtual tonight, um, we will uh make them available. Uh, in any number of ways that the board uh wishes. Um, and uh in addition. Uh, this uh, the budget will be, uh, I believe Matt, uh, prepared to be posted online uh. As soon as we are directed to do so.
Yes, um, as you were speaking. Mark Maryfield was posting all that information online. So it is there right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, uh, just a housekeeping item and does uh Chair Walyumi is feeling under the weather and uh has uh stepped away for the rest of the night. Uh, we hope she feels better very soon. So uh with that, uh, I just had a clarifying question for you, Mark. Uh, the default budget is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, or four hundred and seventy-four dollars below the operating budget? You said below default.
Yep, so uh, let me see if I'm answering your question. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two default budget.
Is thirty-one seven.
Is thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four uh.
Below operating?
Below, I'm sorry, below the operating budget. I, sorry, sorry. Yep, no, I see that right there. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll open it up. Lori, I see your hand up. Um, and you saw me.
So that was gonna be my question about the default budget, because I know a lot of people look to see the default budget less. So thank you very much for. Um, making the default budget less.
Uh, yes, and I, my apologies again for how I read that. So uh, it it is uh thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars below. The proposed operating budget. Thank you.
And the uh, you alluded to Matt having options. Matt, I may have cut you off from your answer, because I just want to let everyone know that Cindy had to step away. Uh, so when I started writing things, it wasn't weird or awkward. So Matt, uh, more of the methods in which we can get uh the budget. As board members, and I think you're probably gonna offer the same to the budget committee.
So we can, we can do whatever the board wants. So we can literally uh have them delivered to your homes tomorrow. Uh, they're in, so that's an option, if you'd prefer that. Um, also, they're available at central office and we. Uh, can, you know, we have a secure entrance, and so we can, if a board member chooses to come. We can uh provide it to you in that secure, you know, uh, window that we have. So really, we'll, we'll do whatever the board uh wishes. It's, it's not a problem to deliver, it's.
Okay, um, so if each board member can just email Sandy Swanson. And let them know how you're um intending to get your book, whether you would like it delivered or whether you uh plan to pick it up. Um, just let her know and let her know when you might be stopping by um a general timeline, just so they know that you're coming. Um, and then. We can pick it up from, I I call it the penalty box. It reminds me of hockey a little bit. So you can pick it up in the penalty box.
Yes, I I will say delivery is free. There is no charge for deli- delivery, so.
So, but if you happen to be heading to CVS or the post office, you're not far off, so. Okay, um, so thank you for that. And um, what are there any questions on Mark's message? Seeing none, thank you very much. We are going to go on to item number seven, which is the approval of minutes. We'll take them one day at a time, so I will entertain a motion to approve the November two sixteen, two thousand twenty minutes. Made by Lori, twelve seconds, seconded by Andy. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll put those minutes to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Abstentions? None. The motion carries four zero zero. I will now entertain a motion to approve the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty minutes. Made by Jenna, seconded by Andy. Any edits to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the two, November nineteenth, twenty twenty minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries four zero zero. Um, item number eight, correspondence. Is there a correspondence to come to the board? Seeing none, uh, comments, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none. Uh, we'll go on to item number nine, new businesses. Are there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, item number ten is committee reports. Have there been any committee reports? Uh, Lori?
So uh, the Planning and Building Committee met last week. They uh had a great meeting with uh administration on the capital improvement plan. Uh, there was a lot of great discussion and um. I I, they put things back into the capital improvement plan. They made some suggestions. They moved things closer. Um, and um, Matt can uh just confirm that uh they, they did have some uh discussion on gym floors and things that. They would like to have done, but um, everyone's understanding under the COVID year that we're going to put off some of those, those projects um this year.
Oh, so I think that's covered. Okay, so are there any other committee reports? Jenna? You are still double muted.
I know. I keep saying, am I on mute?
I'm on double muted, because I think I see someone.
God help me. Okay, so we had a CIT committee meeting, I want to say like two weeks ago now. I don't remember. It was right before Thanksgiving. And we discussed quite a few things. There was a discussion of updating the application process for new courses, primarily focused at the high school, but in general, that was a good and productive discussion. It's a great group. The committee is a great group. I love being part of it. There was a discussion of the snow day slash swap day, first look at the draft of plans, what they, what that might look like. So we talked about that for a little bit and talked through what that might look like. So that was great. And there was a discussion around criteria for software selection moving forward. And we just talked through, you know, the kinds of things we would have to consider as software is like moving forward, but that's the basic. You know, content of the meeting.
Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number 11, which is public comments on agenda items. And we did receive one after our first batch of committee report, or first batch of public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So I will read this one into the record. It's from Wolfram Vanchon at For Conservation Drive. Dear MSB and administration, thank you for sharing the various impressive activities to ensure the remote learning experience is improving and standardized in the future. I love the ideas that some teachers applied during remote lessons in lower grades, like teachers ensuring that parents have captured the assignments and expectations by actively engaging with them at the end of the lesson. I truly honestly appreciate all the various plentiful activities and initiatives. How come then, though, that the very basics aren't better organized? Why is the district reaching out to specialists and organizing workshops with other districts but isn't listening to its own dearest and nearest customers and source, customers and quotes, and sources of feedback? So many times I have reached out over the last few years, and especially since remote learning is a thing about grades and assignments not being updated timely in power school, causing confusion and anxiety in students and parents alike. I just spoke to a friend who was a teacher in Pennsylvania, and he said all schools have ever worked at, require, all schools he ever worked at require a monitor that grades and assignments are being updated at a minimum bi-weekly, making it part of a teacher's performance assessment. Why is this not so in Merrimack? Wouldn't it make absolute sense to ask Merrimack parents and students for feedback as to what works and what doesn't in this tumultuous time? Nothing could be easier, quicker, and more impactful in terms of learning how and where to improve. I heard a lot of comments about our district training its teachers as to how to standardize and present learning material in a coherent, predictable way. Why aren't teachers using this and being audited whether they are? A comment was just made also that teachers are working closely with parents to ensure student success. How does this align with the experience I presented to the board and administration in these recent weeks regarding Spanish, where emails to the teacher remained unanswered and no attention was given to the student's success? I hear so much self-praise, but so little self-reflection in light of the basics, in light that the basics don't work, and it feels that comments from parents that care enough to speak up constructively are caught continuously being ignored, very difficult to understand. Wolfram Vanchon. And I believe that concludes public comments, which it does. So we only did get that one email, so I had to confirm before I clicked off. So at this point, there's no more comments on agenda items. So I will entertain a motion to return to non-public, which was recessed at 6:58.
I make a motion to.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I make a motion to go into non-public.
Okay.
Non-public.
Okay, second from Andy, because we recessed and we're going back in. It just takes a standard vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 400. We will exit this meeting and return to non-public from our earlier session.
Okay, so we do, we go in the same?
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Community Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.